This conference will now be recorded.
We stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, were you saying something?
I don't think it was Chris.
No, that was somebody online.
Alright.
So now, we have approval of the agenda.
You want to do the roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Litcher.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
Ms. Holloway.
Here.
And Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum in the first order of business should be the approval of Supervisor Holloway to attend.
So moved.
Second. Favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now we have the approval of the agenda.
Yes ma'am, you do have just a few update items that is on, it's not on the public ones because I wasn't in the office yesterday to make copies, but you each have one. And so, we would like to add under nine E, which would just be a real quick, all of these are real quick, would be the ERC transfer for Mr. McNamee. And then, a quick update on the historical issues. And then, I've got just something I want to bring up, it's not on your agenda, but it would be nine G, and that's the water shut offs. And then, under the attorney, we've added a real brief update and a change in plans if you're okay with it, and that would be D, and that's a rules change update. Okay? And I don't know if there's anything else, but that's what you have from staff.
Okay. Everybody okay with the agenda?
You're off the board on this.
I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now do we have any audience comments on the agenda items? No audience comments.
Cal, do you have anybody online that's, does anyone want to speak or something? Uh, I have, now, does anyone online want to speak on agenda items? I don't hear it yet. Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to the approval of the minute meetings from November 19.
This is just the first portion, right?
Yes, the second, they're done, I just haven't reviewed them yet.
We do them all together?
No.
They'll be continuous and maybe separate.
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments on it?
I move we accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have our landscape maintenance report?
Ma'am, sure, just want to rephrase my apologize.
Sure.
It's from the Land Quest, it's L-A-N-D-Q-W-E-S-T.
Ah.
I'm sorry. Just I didn't check up on that either.
Is that in the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, that's just minor scribbling.
Change that word?
Apologize for that. It's on page fourteen, line 125 and 128.
I probably spelled it wrong too, and I didn't pick up.
I couldn't do it all the time, I did it ten times.
Uh, what page was it, or line 125?
Yeah, 125, let's say.
And 128. I apologize.
What's, it's supposed to be a small Q?
Uh, W, oh, W, it's actually a large W, yeah, W.
Q, W?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, line twenty-nine and one twenty-eight, you said?
One twenty-five and one twenty-eight.
One twenty-five and one twenty-eight, it's a small difference.
Yeah, thank you. Landscape?
Cal, on the accident repairs.
Yes.
Two pallets in the hand.
Okay.
On that there, it's under $500. So, I just, just so you know, what repairs are needed on that there. And when I did drive around with Michelle, I showed her exactly how that happened. And I just think, like I said before, if we just grass it, that's all we need.
Yeah.
So, nothing special on that.
And even if we can get, we'll handle that item later, but even if we can get it through the insurance and we get the information, right now, they're not dealing with us because we're not the owner of the median.
Right.
Right.
So, but it's, doesn't meet our deductible. It's just $500.
Yes.
So we'll just have it taken care of.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be, so I don't.
I figured, it's pretty simple, it's not like a huge massive deal to do that repair, it's pretty, pretty basic, but I'll put that on the schedule. Move the motion like that.
Uh, I don't think you do, it's regular maintenance, Tony.
Yeah.
It's an emergency manager.
Yeah.
And the minutes will reflect that the board was in agreement, so.
Some of these work orders that we did for, you should put your name, Chris's report on the folks to the vines and stuff like that, that we removed, that's all continued, basic maintenance.
Was that hemp vine, or what type of vines?
It was just exotic vines that were going in, and stuff like that, it's a good example, but we took care of that, that was almost a big poor drive. That's pretty much all been taken care of, both the landscape vines inside, that's just all regular basic maintenance. I am on, I am on wait for the bush hogs, they, there's no bush hogs available right now, as soon as a month available, I'll get the, the goth, I ordered it, but they're just out, they don't have them, it's stopped. Once they give them back, they're going to notify me, I'll get the bush hog, because I've been trying to schedule it, but I haven't been able to get a reunion. Once I get hold of a unit, we'll come out here and take care of that well built, just so you guys know, it is on my schedule.
Do you rent the bush hog from somebody?
Yeah.
Consider it.
Yeah. We don't use it enough, so we, as needed, you know, twice a year that we use it, that's happening, so, as of right now, they don't have one available, but as soon as it becomes available, I will take care of it. It is on my to-do list.
A lot of landscape companies don't, they handle it.
Oh, yeah.
And that's probably why it's not available, because.
Plus all the development.
Yeah. I mean, after the rain, everybody did a bush hog.
Yeah.
We're just not sure, you know, because it's not going to grow anymore, but as soon as I can get an order, I will take care of it. I was hoping to start the landscape install from the approved estimates that you guys approved in the last meeting.
Yeah.
I was hoping to start this week, it looks like I won't be able to until Monday or Tuesday, or the following week, which works out great that I can do the layout with Michelle, because she was part of that, you know, with that vine, with mine with me. And as soon as, you know, Monday or Tuesday, but it will be done before Christmas, I assure you.
At the Christmas?
Before, before.
Is it next week, Christmas?
Yeah, yeah, they're going to do it Monday or Tuesday.
Oh.
So that'll be done, and the tree trimming is scheduled as well.
Oh, good.
So, it all falls together, what I'm trying to shoot is trying to get everything taped, cleaned up, so what we do, we fill them all too, we're not disturbing, we're not trimming half of them. So, as far as the, there was a lot of ant house that they treated, I had my guy come out here and treat some ant house, been really dry, so, yeah, all over the place, but that's been just part of our maintenance as well. As soon as the tree trimming is done, I think the first or second week, January, we'll be able to put down much. So, we'll do the same as last year, I think we did a certain color, the medians changed it up a little bit, and we used the natural one on the forty-one. So, you know, it's all pushing, trying to get stuff done, so, other than that, that's all I've really got.
Did you have to make sure they checked the median on Case Drive? Because we bicycle almost every day, and it used to be on, you can see where it's been sprinkling, it doesn't look like it's been.
Thank you for reminding me on that, my guys came off here, yeah, they did notice, this was, thanks for my, um, I have no power to one of the timers, and it's somewhere with the connection where they installed the new lighting, something within that, something happened, but I might need any power for irrigation timer on one side.
Is that what's affecting the light too?
Yes, and it must be affecting the light because it's in connection with that, and it's all powered by the same circuit, so it's.
Do you have somebody that's going to check it out, identify the problem?
I don't, I don't know, because the same guys that installed the lights, whether it was a touch, no, it's the wiring, so I would maybe check with them and let them know that you're not getting power.
Some guys saw that Chris's report, that he, XL was it?
Yeah, I think so.
And they were coming out, they'd been called, and, you know, so, and that power does brought that irrigation, it, it works, but there's just no power right now to that timer.
The guy reported this week, it was looking really dry, and that's exactly what became all, and there's no power to that, so if it's affecting the light, it's also affecting the irrigation.
Robert?
Yes?
Um, we wanted to mention to the board about when we're going to pave the roads, the next time that we wanted to lay out the irrigation and have one single timer, did you want to talk about that?
I can run it by, just so they know, I, I, the conversation goes back to a couple years back, and maybe you guys were a part of it when we did talk discussing. I know the roads on Newport Drive and Case Drive, I don't know what program, what future programs you guys have as far as re-ashol, T-B-C ceiling, or, you know, what road projects you guys have in C-I-D. My recommendation is, our system is really old in the medians, and you guys won't know why the breakages that we've had on the main lines from the root system, from the oak trees and stuff that we have in the, in the median that, in the past, wires, you know, where you don't have connections to some zones because the wires have been cut or spliced. Uh, I wanted to bring this up, when this project does come up, I would, I highly recommend, even if it's.
That'd be part.
Them or whoever does the work, sleeve all the medians, so we can eventually, in the future, the water's there, but eventually in the future, connect everything in one station, because right now, you guys have a total, just on Newport Drive, of like five timers, and all of that can just be ran by the one, you know, so just future type of, you know, preparing. How many controllers are there? Overall, over the C-I-D, we're about ten. Wow. Yeah, and we can cut that pretty much in half, makes it a lot easier for, when we conduct wet checks, because you go to one timer, you just turn it on in the whole entire area, but we have to connect everything in one. Is it a two wire system? It's a, uh, I guess eventually, it's a two wire system, I did, the conventional has been working fine, but over time, you know, with wires being cut, wired, being spliced, you know, it's just, it's time to run. When it, when it, when it is done, it's just, if we can sleeve it, run, right, you know, you know, pre-prepare, even if we don't do it at that time, but if that comes in the future, I highly, highly recommend that.
Is it conduit that's, that's wrapping the cable now, the cables run through conduit pipe?
No, normally irrigation, it's a separate wire, and it runs with a main line that runs, that feeds all those zones.
And it's exposed.
It's, it's exposed, but it's covered in a casing, but it's not in conduit.
So you would sleeve the existing wire and not rewire?
Um, we would, what I'm saying is sleeve would be the areas to connect the island to island, so we could eventually run wire in it and connect them all together.
Be sure, if I put some conduits in advance, that's something we can rewire, right, it's just better putting good conduits versus putting new conduits. So it's like PVC conduit.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, just so, an area so we can connect all the islands.
That makes sense.
You know, because the whole entire Newport Drive all runs.
Yeah.
Just in the middle, the extra, the twenty feet on this side, twenty feet, pretty much the other associations, their irrigation takes care of that, but the median itself in general, through Newport Drive, is all pretty much controlled by us.
I'm going to ask a naive question, why would we wait until there's paving to be done or something, because it runs under the road?
Well, you're going to disturb the road.
I see, yeah.
You're going to, so if you're going to disturb the road.
You gotta do it anyway.
Right, it's better than to see where you saw, you know, seeing where we ran.
Yeah, I see.
Better run asleep, cover it with the new asphalt, and it's done, you know.
And if we do need to expedite it because of wiring and so forth, that our paving program's not, yeah, suit it up.
Yeah.
We could do maybe some directional drills underneath those medians too, to.
Right, right.
Because they're more expensive perhaps.
Right.
But we could do, do it more ex, do it a little quicker with some directional drills.
Right now, you have nothing in your budget for payment, you're considering, you know.
That's why I was asking, but.
You have nothing that's being considered now, so it might be worth your while, either to have Robert give us a proposal for a system analysis on what's needed, or we can get some bids and, and, or do both.
Can we get a, can we get any kind of printout of how many, how many repairs have been on the section you're talking about, first of all, to see if it would be cost effective? And it sounds like it would be, for us, to do the drill and do it that way and not wait, because if it's another, my three, four, five years, that's a lot of money, so maybe it makes more sense to address it now, if we could figure out how many times you have to go out there, and how many times it burns the grass and all that stuff, right? How do we get that?
We can, we can put something together, ideally, I think we can wait, you know.
Okay.
I'm just saying, just prepare for something that, that would be something, be sure to add into that. Part of the preparation though, is knowing what you've got and what you need.
Right, yeah.
So that's why I'm suggesting that.
Well, no, I think we should.
We get a, we get an analysis of the system, you don't know how old the controllers are, and, you know, maybe now you want to join the twentieth century and go with a, a two-wire electric rail, that digital controller, where like he said, you can easily cut them in half, maybe even more than that.
Well, sorry.
You'd be able to manage it remotely, the system.
Yep, exactly. Wireless.
That didn't come up in the C-I-P report?
No. I don't think they.
It's just a recommendation.
Yeah, no, no, it's good. And I, I just, you know, being proactive as far as for future type of, you know, preparation, because if you don't bring it up at the time, I've seen properties do this, and they got to go back, now they're drilling, they're going to rent steeps, you know, and connect it and conduit it outside, but that's pretty much it, you know, I know we talked about it with Michelle, and I just wanted to bring it up, and we talked a while back, but I just want to, you know, I, I don't want to get caught lines, if you guys did the asphalt and we didn't prepare for any of this.
Yeah, 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 I know, I'd recommend this.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If. The, we don't have anything in the C-I-P for what length of time before we're looking at doing roads.
Yeah, I think so.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he had it spread out.
Well, I'm saying, was it, was it in the five-year range or the ten-year range that we're going to look at doing roads?
Let me take a look.
Because as I just said, that would influence whether we want to look at this now, because if we're going to be ten years down the road before we're talking about doing roads, I'm just saying, if that's the thing, then we might even want to look at this, something.
We probably looked at it from a total standpoint, right?
Right.
Of doing all the roads in a certain period of time, but anytime you get a section where you have to, you know, maybe it's water being blow out that you're going to have to go in, and having that information there, knowing where all of the lines are and everything else, it's good for the contractor, it's great for the engineer, and it's wonderful for the.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think we need to look at, do we have exactly.
We actually had just Newport identified in the five to ten year range, the, the other roads seem to be in reasonable condition.
But that's a shame, right?
But Newport's, yeah, well, not only most traffic, but it's actually seeing some fracking and so forth that's occurring on it, so we did say a five, between five or ten years.
So it could be another five to ten years before we even start looking at that, so it's a good idea to go ahead and look at the other now.
Yeah. Julie, Robert and I, we get surprising for doing directional drills.
Yes.
A lot of times they are almost, well, throwing the restoration work is, a lot of times they are cheaper.
Well, it makes sense, you, you're not, you don't need the pavement.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And directional drilling is never a bad deal.
No.
But I think you need a master plan.
Oh, I agree.
We need an analysis, and then we can, we can red flag areas that are going to have to be addressed, and make sure that we include identification of all the areas where it might require directional drilling to install the conduit. So, I think, if, if you guys are all in agreement with going in that direction and developing a master plan for irrigation and looking at the system, either Robert can give you a proposal, but at the same time, we can get other proposals to have this done if you want, it's just, how, how would you like to proceed with that?
Okay. My understanding is, my understanding is, what you're saying is consolidate, so like, hypothetically, if you have ten sections that you're controlling individually, you want to control that whole thing with one controller, so to repair just one section of it isn't going to work, it won't be compatible, am I hearing that right?
Right, right.
So we need to do, when we do it, we would need to do it all at once.
Yeah. But if you've got a plan, and he can start reducing them, it's just, you're just worried you're cutting off and which ones those are, you can still, you don't have to do them all at one time, okay, that's, okay, if we don't have to do them all at one time, it makes sense, and we do, that's another.
Yeah. And we can provide Robert with some base plans and some of the regulations and so forth that you can work from.
Yeah. Well, and I, that was the other thing I was going to mention, that you've got some sort of a site plan that shows the irrigation system, but Robert's people can go through it and see, because there's been changes over the last, I don't know when that was done, and then have David's people update that site plan where you know exactly what you've got right now. Okay? And that would be part of the plan, I think, you know, having, you know, identifying the age of the controller, the controllers are going to, probably, other than wiring, it's going to be your biggest expense, and a controller, an individual controller can run five to $20,000. It just depends on what you get, one community, we just changed out all to digital electronic two-wire system, and they were $20,000 a meter per a controller, first, they cut it from twenty down to nine.
We need it, okay, I don't think this is life support.
Right.
I don't think we need, it'd be nice if the analysis doesn't cost anything, but the C-I-P's got to be hit before we start spending that kind of money on something that isn't life support for the community, like a generator or.
People don't have irrigation water, that's going to be pretty critical to them, and they're going to be screaming, and they're, how come we can't, you know, before we went to the blended irrigation water, I was getting calls almost every day from, you know, the developers here at Orchid Cove, you know, because they were pumped, we're pumping from the, the fire station, and they're getting, you know, water that was very salty.
It didn't, it didn't cost us anything to do the plant, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll call them to do the plant, yeah, I mean, Robert's not going to spend, I mean, you know, twenty hours.
We're not, we're not putting something on back burner while we're doing the plant.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, you're not talking big dollars.
Yeah.
I think it hurts, doesn't hurt to have the plan and be ready to go in case you need to.
And you can still reject it.
Yeah.
You're just getting proposals.
That was just something that I wanted to bring up for future.
Yeah. We want to motion for that? I, yeah, it sounds like we might need it.
Right, I'll move that we go ahead and do a plan for investment.
Okay, do a plan, which would be Robert.
Robert do it.
Okay, so, other proposals, Robert's going to put together a proposal and bring it back to the board for consideration of doing a master plan.
I'll second that.
Okay. I can get David to ask him, I don't see that need for that, but.
Yeah, I think we got most of the community spent it where we know, we do have subouts going for the side of roads.
Yeah. Yeah, even just, I've seen communities where they've done it backwards, where they didn't do nothing, and they're, and they're cutting asphalt, and the future will be the big mistake, you know.
No, it's a good point, good point. Even counting state governments do it too often.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true, I mean, your system's only maybe thirty-five years old plus, you know, so, I mean.
Our's twenty, and our's big.
Yeah. That's, that's pretty much, so I'd bring that up for thirty years, so.
I'll say that thirty and so probably.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
We, we have a second.
She has a second. Question of second to have Robert prepare a proposal for analyzing the irrigation system and make recommendations, and then update the master map.
We do have a master map for the C-I-P.
Yeah, so, get it, get it with David, so he can put it on the CAD drawings that they have.
I think we have one there of the plant too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No names?
I said aye.
Okay.
It's a four one. It's not costing anything, so.
Right, you said aye?
No, I said aye.
Aye, okay.
It's not costing anything, right?
Well.
It is costing, it will eventually, if you proceed with it.
Right. Did you do Union Road maintenance?
Yes.
Did you cover that? I have one thing I, I want to bring up, I know it came up last year, and it reminded myself of it this year, with all the new communities coming closer to us, can we plan next year to put up lights at the entrances around the holidays? How does everybody feel about that?
Tony, is that a problem to spend C-I-D money on, first with the holiday lighting?
On district property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a problem, yeah, okay. My own opinion.
So can we make a note?
Uh, well, I think that.
You could call that a.
You're not going to meet again before the end of the holidays, so.
No, we won't be able to do it this year, but I want, I don't want to miss it next year.
Probably what I even think about, not only the budget, but starting to look for proposals and see who could, what you, what you actually want to do.
Yeah, you got to need a design.
Catherine, I think you did it on your side one year yourself.
Yeah, some of our girls did, yeah, and that was quite a few years.
Okay.
And it was very, very simple, nobody.
Okay. All right.
Okay. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. You had, you had no new proposals, right, Robert?
No.
No, okay. So we move on to utilities?
Mitch, so everyone can hear you, that is on, but on the bottom, turn it to on. Just look at the left.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
The water and wastewater plant is operating good as normal, the wastewater received was 4.6 million gallons, the water produced was 4.7, a little more sent out than what we brought back, and then the reuse was 6.4 million gallons, so a good indication that it is dry season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a boost.
On the items requiring approval, we've been talking about the fire pump station, I met with David over there, we looked at it, took measurements, tried to determine just how far you would want to go in rehabs or repairs, I sent all the information to Ohio Panel, the electrical contracting company that builds panels, they're working on, submittals, which will go to David for his approval, and then from there, I guess it will be put out to bid, it will determine how big a project you want, how much you want, just a panel, or a panel generator, piping, so forth and so on, but I'm sure David will get with you at a later point on that.
Mitch, on that, I had a resident come to me.
Yeah.
And they gave me this, which is another company that does that.
Sure.
And they used to do this for Lurk, and I said that, and I'm not overriding you, I don't, I'm asking your opinion.
Yeah.
They said that basically, the generator car hasn't got a lot of miles on it, hasn't had a lot of use, and it's pretty much just a basic engine. The, it's the board that's obsolete that controls it, correct?
So, in the overall scheme of things, yes. The, the engine part of it is old and simple.
Yeah.
The generator part of it's old and simple, but the control part of the generator is just obsolete.
Right.
Nobody's repairing the old stuff anymore, maybe a warmer out of the field. I, myself, if I had that generator at my house, I would probably keep patching it up.
Yeah.
As long as I could, but because of the importance of that canal station.
Yeah.
That, that's why it makes it critical.
I'm with you, I'm gonna just forward this to you and David, because you know what it says. But it says that that's what they do, they do custom control panel manufacture.
Sure.
So here, you guys can look at it, and this person used to do that. And they made it a point to give it to me, so I'm passing it on to you.
Yeah, it's just possible, replace just the control panel, that would, would help.
Well, I mean, it's gonna save over a hundred grand, right?
Yes.
That's a lot. Let's look at it.
I'll send this, you know. Absolutely. Yeah, so Mitch and I got out there, we did talk about the irrigation pump station and so forth. Some other possible things that we need to be taking a look at probably there. One is the intake structure itself, and how the water comes into, into the chamber where the pumps are. And as far as we know, nobody's really taken a look at it since day one. Uh, you know, in the past, it's had a history, when it has run, it's sucking shells and different things like that into the irrigation system and the fire system. So that may be something we wanna take a look at and have a diver come in and actually do that, because it's all submerged and so forth, and see if we've got any issues with that that may require some repairs. The other thing, right now, it's just got chain link fence around it. And as we put potentially a new generator, new generator modifications and control panels and so forth, do we all feel comfortable enough that chain link's gonna protect that adequately? Or should we be looking at maybe a precast concrete wall around it to afford a little bit of protection against fandals?
What is it, what is it where the white vinyl fence surrounds? What does the white vinyl fence?
Oh, that's some, like Comcast.
Oh, that's not even this.
That's not even.
So where is this located?
It's on back stat.
Oh, in the back?
It's around it, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we need to clear some plants getting out around it. Uh, the other item is piping itself. Right now, it's thirty-five years old, probably.
What's it made out of?
It's not, it's not wire, but Mitch has had to replace a piece of it already.
What's it?
So that's.
Ductile iron.
Ductile iron.
It's, it's metal pipe with a concrete lining in the middle.
Yes.
Like six is that?
Nothing's going to.
Well, no, actually, ductile irons use the whole bunch, it's, it's a very, very, very good product. It's had a good long life. Uh, you know, right now, if you're doing underground piping, you typically use PVC or polyethylene type pipe and so forth. Uh, so, yeah, it is good, but it's starting to show its age.
Doesn't that line, how big a pipe is that, a foot?
Uh, it's probably, what, eight inch pipe?
Yeah, it's eight inch.
So it's an eight inch line? It goes out in below the weir, like somewhere in that water right there?
Oh, that one is probably way much bigger than what you're seeing out in the canal. So it comes into a big concrete tank, and then you have those four vertical turbine pumps that suck it out.
That's the irrigation?
That's irrigation fire, yeah.
Right, oh, that's for everything?
It's for everything, they're one in the same. And that's the backup, the system that's at the plant.
Correct. That's why.
Well, what's the other one you're talking, the eight inch?
Well, the eight inch piping's the stuff that's above grade.
Above the ground.
That's where it pumps it out, it pumps it out of the intake structure, then it pumps through that piping, and then into the overall system.
So that big one has gotta go back quite a few years.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Over thirty years.
That's what happens. Once I've been out there with David and we started looking at the panel, the generator, then that.
And you looked at the.
House tank, and house intake, and house piping, and so forth.
Yes, so, you know, if we wanna pursue those things, I'll, I'll start putting together some numbers and so forth, get a price maybe from some diving companies to see if we can do that inspection in the field. Just, just make sure that we don't have bigger issues than that, and that we, we get, do this basic improvements with the electrical system, but that we don't address the other stuff, and we have a failure there.
Yeah, you're sucking in shells into the system, that, that ain't itself.
No, that's not good for anybody.
Well, it really did, it blocked, I think I'm saying this right, a few years ago on Orchid Cove, when you were, when you were doing the mixed irrigation, all the lines plugged up, and they were full of sand and full of shells.
When we first started here, you were running on that one.
Right, it was coming out of there.
Back there had failed.
Right.
So we were getting calls out, almost daily, removing shells and stuff from the meter.
Because we had to replace some crazy number of sprinkler heads.
Right.
Because they were all dead, they were all killed.
Yeah.
And it was because of the blockage, because of that.
Yes, so it's something that we do need to look at. You know, fortunately, we don't run off that system very often.
Right.
We haven't.
We have done it for three years. It only runs once a month, just to test, make sure it's gonna work if we need it, but we haven't had to use it in three years.
Is that stuff on the C I P report?
Some of the repairs were, I think we had like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified for that work, including a brand new generator, the M C C. But we didn't get into too much of the piping and that type of thing at this point.
The turbine and pillars are okay?
Those are, yeah, easily fixed, they're maintenance and so forth. Same thing with the motors.
Oh, okay.
Motors are motors, and pump heads are pump heads a little bit as far as repairs.
Because the, the salinity is changing below the weir. Where's the intake?
Oh, it's below.
It's below the weir.
Yeah.
So the salinity is going up.
Well, actually, we're pumping out all the fresh.
Oh, we're pumping before the weir, but it's down below, I was thinking.
Yeah, we're probably catching some salinity, though.
You mean, so behind the weir?
Yeah, we're behind the weir, all the fresh.
Freshwater side.
But again, even that's changing a little bit as far as salinity.
Yeah, because the pressure's gone considerably down, coming from up north in the canal itself.
And the weir is not.
The restoration affects, the restoration affects that water.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, usually, yes. In fact, there's probably greater flow through that canal now than what there was several years ago. Just because all the restoration they're doing upstream.
Hey.
All the wastewater requirements were met, no issues. The water, land distribution, all requirements were met, no issues. We did a bunch of the annual samples that are due in November, they were all good. Reuse station back at the plant, everything's operating well with it. Both the R O trains, the water plant, you have two trains, two R Os, that's the primary treatment process. Once a year, we clean those, those trains with a low pH chemical sulfuric acid. So we did both of those strains last month, took just a couple days. Inspected all the lift stations, the monthly blower checks were done. One of the blowers, which we didn't put on here, but one of the blowers, there's issues. It's been removed, it's in off, to be evaluated for repair, indoor replacement. Um, no odor complaints, the plant generator's running fine, it starts up every week. They come out and check it quarterly. The reused P L C, B C I came out, replaced that, everything's working good, so that's all running back and automatic now, no issues with it. The security cameras, they came out, they started installing those and making the connections. They found that the fiber optic between the main plant and the north plant has got a failure. So they cannot run those cameras through fiber optic. So now they elected to run them via Wi-Fi antenna, which they tell me is secure, it was an eight hundred dollar change order. I hope it's okay, but on your behalf, I gave them the approval to move forward with that. So it didn't slow things up, so they.
Who's? Who's?
Who's responsible?
Fiber optic is.
Who's responsible?
Fiber optic. It used to connect the M V R to the main control room. And when they loaded it, they were just gonna jump into that fiber optic and transfer the signal back to the control room for those northern cameras, or southern cameras. But when they connected them, there's a problem with the fiber optic. Now that we're not using the M V R, we don't need to communicate with that into the plant no more, so we had no idea.
They being southern trend, when they put it in?
Uh, well, when they put it in, it worked, but sometime between the M V R coming offline, which was six years ago, and now, there's a failure in that fiber optic.
I'm super uncomfortable with the Wi-Fi situation. Temporarily, it's okay, but I really think we need to get that fiber optic tract fixed. It can't be a big deal.
That's no problem.
It can't be a big deal. I mean, how far can it be, a hundred feet?
It's on the ground, I don't know.
Yeah, but how far under the ground?
A hundred feet, probably. How many? Probably a couple hundred feet.
Yeah, probably two hundred feet, but it's under the main plant and.
Yeah, is it a conduit? We hope it's a conduit.
I would assume it's a.
You think it's a couple hundred feet deep?
No, no.
No, no, long, long.
Yeah, and it can't be down there.
And if it's a conduit, maybe it won't be too bad.
Right, right. We should track it and fix it, I don't trust Wi-Fi.
Unless somebody broke the conduit somewhere to line.
It could be anything.
The conduit, then we, then we put a cancel on the Wi-Fi, and I'll get with B C I, because A D T, they don't work on.
Right.
I'll get with B C I and get them to come out.
Yeah, I, I wanna totally, that's drinking water, totally secure, totally.
Okay.
I just don't trust Wi-Fi at all.
I'll get that. I'll get that taken care of today.
And just, well, I guess, how do we do this? Can we just have them do it, up to a certain dollar? I said, you can do that, but I just tell them to do it. Yeah, I don't wanna wait thirty days, I mean, let's get it.
All right.
And get the cameras up.
Okay. I'll get that.
Nobody has a problem with that, right?
The backflow preventer handles, so we've changed out all the handles on the backside now. But I do have residents that come up to me, and they want a handle on the front side as well. There's no need for it, but tell me, you want me to go back?
We can sell them.
I mean, they're expensive, they're like.
Yeah, I know they are.
When you say, I guess, when you say the.
So on top of the backflow out of the orange.
The backflow is what?
Like a lever hand, it's a thing up above the ground that's.
What's its purpose?
To keep any water from your, like, if we have a water main, right? Any water from your home backside can enter the water main.
So why would they want one in the front?
Some people just like, so a lot of people like to shut their water off out there when they leave for the winter.
Yeah, we're trying to discourage that, aren't we?
And trying to, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we replaced all the handles that were bad on the backside. And a long time ago, they had removed all the handles on the front side, but some people insist they would like to have it on the front side as well. I, I don't know. So before I spend your money, I just wanna know, like, I don't, I don't.
It's like a unnecessary expense.
It really is.
And then you have more.
Jason's got a question.
Can you come up here so we can hear you?
We should tell them to turn it off.
What was?
They shouldn't turn their water off.
At the.
Well, in the house.
Oh.
In the house. This is at the street. Do you wanna come up front?
No.
We can't hear you, gotta come up to the.
We have to record you. Give Mitch a chance.
We just. We know these encouraged people, we turned it off in the street because we thought that was the proper thing to do.
Yeah.
But saying, don't turn it off in the street, they could just turn it off in the house.
Okay, if there's a problem.
Yeah, right.
And you gotta shut it off, then that's fine. But if you got a problem, have the guys come.
So when people, we vote these encouraged, if you're going for seventy-two hours, turn it off in the house and in the street. So going forward, we should tell them, just turn it off in the house.
Yes, yeah, just turn up the little valve on the pipe, that's it.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, that's you're not talking about the house.
Outside and inside.
Yeah, outside.
Not, not on the meter, where the meter is.
The house, all right.
The backflow or the, the meter?
The backflow.
Don't shut it off there.
Okay.
Uh, we can't verify it, they're still gonna be charged if there's any leaks. Anything that goes through the meter.
Right.
Unless, and it costs them ten dollars, but unless Mitch's guys go out and turn it off, then I think we're still putting blocks up, right? Yeah, and then we know that the meter was off.
All right, okay, yeah.
Can you sing White Christmas?
I can, and I can do a chirp to the dance.
Oh, all right.
So some of the storm drains that were on the schedule to be cleaned, we cleaned a few of them, and we still got a few more we gotta finish up, so you'll see our truck are in there in the next week or two.
They're doing the culverts, too.
Yeah, the culverts. Then the R P Zs, you'll see my guys, they've been going through certifying all the backflows, wrapping that up. So they get certified every other year, by. Health and safety, everything's good, and then there's just a chart on the back with your fill. And then, one other thing, on Venus Cave, we did a water main repair a month or two ago, and when we backfilled, we did not put silt screen up. If the water washed that out into the road, it made a mess, of which I did not catch. We cleaned it up, put a silt screen up, that was totally on us. So I got with Robert, he's gonna come and put some saw down, so that that doesn't happen again. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have, I have one.
Go ahead.
Um, we have the, the new meters in, which we can drive by now.
Yes.
So what about, is anybody looking at our exposed pipes to make sure there's no leaks? Unless a, a resident calls in.
No, man, no, I only get that. So we, we do, even though you get built every other month, we read twice. So we see if there's a high flow, and we go back and check it, but the, it will not, like, if it's a drip, it will not catch that, so I only know if you call, or somebody riding a bicycle sees it.
Well, the reason why I asked, there's a new home being built on my block, and it's next to a bacon lot. And it looks like our pipes are on the bacon lot. But it was leaking, I don't know if it's fixed, but because of the leak, it's overgrown. I can't even see the pipes anymore.
Gotcha.
So I don't.
I'll go look at that one.
You don't know what address it is, do you?
It's between one eighty-two and one seventy-four. So it's one seventy-six.
I'll go look at that.
Yeah.
Uh, you mentioned that M V R, we probably talked about this before. Is there any way we can, with no cost to the community, scrap that, or get some money for it, or whatever? I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but, you know, I.
It's not worth anything.
Not that I'll scrap.
Not even scrap, because it's such a mix of PVC and metal that to remove the PVC, to try to scrap the metal, um, it, it would only cost you money to take it out of the way.
Okay.
I use one as I remove there. Although it wouldn't be that expensive, because they're on skid, so it'd just be loaded up and really, probably is air to labor and a dump.
Do you need the space, would the space help you?
Uh, we can always use space, but it's not critical in any way, to, to me at least, it's not.
So some of the digesters, you might be able to use for water storage or portable water.
Mainly mechanical equipment, isn't it?
It's mainly mechanical equipment, we've already, any tanks that were associated has already been converted back to the previous treatment process and is working fine. So we can cannibalize it or anything.
It was an experiment. Do you have any idea, and you probably don't, do you have any idea, or have you ever heard, how long it actually worked, ran, or did it ever run?
Eight years, right?
That I'm not sure of, but yeah, I did, it probably seems like the right.
I think it ran from oh eight to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
And then it, that was it?
Wait, before oh eight? It may have been oh six or oh five, I don't know.[1655.12]
Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, we got engineered support.
Alright, good. First thing is the new home construction drainage, sidewalk damage issues. Around the first of the month, we set out, I think it was about nine or ten letters to different property owners and so forth, come up with builders. Just informing them some things that they, they need to address as far as some broken sidewalk panels that need to be addressed somewhere along the line of before they finish construction, along with some places where we did have some soap washouts in the valley gutters. And we're at, we asked them to go ahead and take care of it. Kind of a mixed bag as far as some of the reactions. Some of it was positive, some of it was negative for the different folks that received the letters. Uh, but anyway, uh, my, my guy was out here yesterday, day before, he did do a drive around. For the most part, most of it has been taken care of as far as cleaning up some of the sites. Uh, there are a couple of other things that are out there. I think we've got a portallet right now sitting in the middle of one of the sidewalks. It should really be moved.
A what?
A portallet, one of the portallet.
Yeah.
We didn't get it off the sidewalk, even though the sidewalk may be cracked there.
But was, was there anything wrong with that, though? Because, uh, usually you don't want people on the sidewalk like construction's going on.
Right, and really, and ideally, too, if, if we got severe cracking of the sidewalk or the, where the panels are displaced and so forth, then we need to make sure it gets posted that it's blocked. But, uh, yeah, it's probably not good to have a portallet sitting on the sidewalk if it's still passable.
It's my block. I used to walk around there.
Good, good. You're not using it or anything, are you?
No. Ask my dogs.
Uh, drainage concerns along the Kays and Newport Drive. I, I, I think that, uh, let's see, I won't jump ahead here. Us. We, we looked a little bit at that, uh, at previous board meeting and there was discussion about sidewalk drainage. Uh, let me pass this around. It's a, we took a little bit of a look at what we may be able to do with, with the sidewalk drainage. We looked at several different options there. And kind of settled upon one where we would take the sidewalk panels out that have the drain generated between the pipes, PVC pipes. And then we would replace that with an open, open flow channel with a grate over the top. If we, we need, because it's the sidewalk, we need to make sure it's ADA, uh, compatible. So that means it doesn't have the big open grates and so forth. It's real fine mesh, per se, on the top. So any, handicap person can walk over it. There's no chance that somebody steals, getting caught in it if they happen to be walking with heels in or whatever. So i- i- if that's something we want to pursue, I can go ahead and get some pricing for some contractors to go and replace the, uh, the three that we have out there at this point. And then bring it back for the next board meeting, hopefully by the next board meeting. It's kind of a crazy time to be putting proposals out right now for contractors to bid on with the holidays, but.
So these are the ones where you see the white pipe coming out?
Correct, correct. And they're at, uh.
Why do we do it that way?
It was a cheap solution.
I was gonna say cheap.
Yeah, cheap solution. You see that does quite a bit in different places. It's, but it, it's got a tendency to want to flog up easier, easily. Not to say that even this, this option may need to be cleaned occasionally, too, but its frequency should be a lot less. Uh, you know, basically, we're going to have an opening probably about four by, well, four by two foot four, or two by two. So it's going to be a pretty good sized opening going underneath there. Uh, what we figured out was a pretty much a standard, uh, grate that a DOT uses.
Yeah.
Okay, the openings two foot by four and three quarter inch?
Yeah, about that.
But are the bridges underneath each one, underneath that grate, or is it completely open, or?
It's gonna be.
It looks like it's got feet going underneath.
No, it's gonna be completely open.
Completely open.
Yeah. Yeah, so you'll have a clear opening about four by two, four inches high by two feet wide.
Is that enough?
Oh, yeah, it's a lot more than we have right now.
It's a lot more than that.
Especially when they start flogging up.
Well, that's what I mean. Is it going to be enough?
Oh, yeah, it should move the water fine.
Problem is these guys, they're just absolutely worthless. And, and you can look at the picture, they've already had to cut it down at one time to be able to, because the whole thing lifted up. So.
Here again, how old is all that?
Well, it's when it was built.
Yeah, yeah, coming up on thirty years.
Yeah. The whole thing's thirty years.
I think we need to look at, at doing this. Because those others are absolutely worthless.
So I'll go ahead, is, is, we're, does it have any problems? I'll go ahead and get some pricing for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yes. Uh, let's see, next item is pit specifications for the new generating control board. And we talked about that earlier in the business report there. And we'll, we'll go ahead and start putting some numbers together as far as getting things inspected and so forth there. On the ownership, it's still a Mars North Stormwater System. But at the last board meeting, we talked about taking a quick look at potentially the district taking over all the drainage responsibilities and the individual communities and so forth. And we started on that now, and we've got some, starting to get some quantities as far as how much more assets you would acquire by that. And associated with those assets, though, is the maintenance costs and all that. So there's a lot of catch bases, a lot of covered pipe, a lot of lakes and swales that would need to be maintained by the district. Now theoretically, of course, the cost would be passed on to, to the residents. And hopefully, the, the homeowners, associations and condo boards, they, that would reduce their costs associated with maintenance of their own system. So, yeah, you know, theoretically, it should be a wash in, in the, in the, in the cost, but you know, a lot of times it doesn't work out that way. So we're going to put that, those numbers together, let you know what kind of assets, potential maintenance costs that you would incur as a district. So that, that'll probably be the next board meeting. We'll have that for you. Okay. Uh, Union Road pothole filling. Uh, I think the, 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 the rock's been delivered, I think it was scheduled for this week, right?
Yeah, it's been delivered. Um, and I don't know, my guy was going to try to get down there yesterday. I'm not sure if he's started spreading it yet or not, but, um, it will be.
We got two truckloads delivered, so it should last for quite a while doing some pothole filling.
What do you go for a track?
What's that?
What do you have for tractors?
I have a skid steer.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, good. Oh, that's perfect. Okay, good.
Yes, but, but the plan is to keep some in reserve for, yeah.
Yeah, right, good.
For the next time, yeah.
Yeah.
Couple other little things that have come up. Uh, I think Cal copied you all on that permit, that Sunrise Case applied for further VODOC replacement and so forth. And we took a brief look at that. Looks like it's pretty much the same number of VODOC, uh, that they're looking at. The, the only thing we want to do a little bit as it develops and construction occurs is just make sure that the water feeds that go out to the docks, they meet the cross, cross connection requirements of the district. So we want to keep an eye on that as it's built out.
Is that private? I assume it is.
It's private.
It's all privately on the sewall?
Yes, yes.
Not ours?
Correct, okay. Water feeds there already? It's got water feeds already, but we just want to make sure if they do redo the water feeds, that there's no changes that would affect the district. So anyway, several months down the road, we'll just go out there after they kind of finish things up and make sure everything looks good.
Excuse me, where is this at?
Sunset Cave.
Sunset, is it?
Sunrise.
Sunrise, sunrise.
Sunrise Cave. Yeah, everybody says sunset.
Yeah, Sunrise Cave, yeah. They, they're in for a permit.
I've got a copy I can give her of the application.
Yeah, yeah, they, they got a permit in with the Corps and the DEP about getting, uh, new docks permitted, some floating docks, I believe it is. Yes.
Won't be anytime soon.
Do you want to, do you want to come up to the mic, please? And just say, you know, who you are and if you're a resident or a tenant.
Uh, so my name is Peggy, oh, do I have to?
Turn it on on the very bottom. You can leave it on the stand, just.
Okay.
Just to the left, yeah.
Yeah.
Hello? My name is Peggy Kazlowski. I live in one thirty-five Windwood Cave. And while we're on the subject of the, um, storm drainage maintenance, um, my, uh, we have a serious flooding problem. Um, almost every, um, rainstorm. Uh, we ourselves have fixed four blowouts. Um, and tried to mitigate the effects of having all that water come through a two-inch hole in the drain system. And, um, it's, we've approached the CID about it before and have had no help or, um, resolution of the problem. So since we are doing the fixing of the pipes halfway down the road, will we be also dealing with that as well? Sounds like that's something that you're going to start reviewing or you're, what end of Windwood Cave are you? I'm at the very end.
The cul-de-sac?
Yes, at the cul-de-sac.
Was it, Russ, you live on that block, don't you?
Yeah.
Wasn't, uh, there problems before, but it was because of plants being in your, no?
No.
Might, might have had something to do with it. No, I, I've watched the storm.
Yeah, well, mostly the caves do have issues with the drainage at the, at the outpost structure. Part of it's been the accumulation of materials over thirty years and some of the swales. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a unique system that, uh, they're using the rear yard swales for water retention.
Yeah.
To get the water quality before discharge.
And it does.
And also for conveyance. And anyway, i- it was probably a questionable system from day one, but, you know, that's what we've got and.
Well, the thing about it, when we built our house, um, the first time, you know, we, we were one of the first people to build after quite a while. And so when we started construction of the house, the board required us to put in two thousand dollars to put in this proper swale that now makes us the low point on the entire street.
Welcome.
So the last relatively big storm that we had, the water was in, in, actually has flowed over the cement drainage. And the last sort of big storm that we had, it almost flowed over. And like I said, we spent thousands of dollars fixing blowouts and.
Wait, by the cement, what do you mean?
This is that drainage area.
Okay, the, the, the discharge structure.
The discharge, that's right.
Yeah, and, and it, and it, if something does back up, yeah, unfortunately, there is a lot of water that accumulates down there.
Uh, that's, that's saying it mildly.
We work for Mr. Benson. He was great, trying to help us out on this. He's retired. Mr. Smith was really kind enough to come take a look at our problem. And you mentioned that's the lower end of the development is mine. And I said, okay, that's a problem. So I asked him, I said, there's so much more, it's like a flash flood.
It's exactly what it is.
Literally.
Exactly what it is.
It's a flash flood. And you get a one-inch slot in that system on that receptacle, which cannot handle that amount of water. So every time, this past October, we had that rainfall. I've been really accountable to all this. I keep on getting big cypress coming in landscape. Fix the blowouts. No, I don't bother you guys. I just go and do it. I thought this was finally going to be handled this last time when it came. This October, that water just crushed over. And again, I had another ball. Not a major one, something I could fix. I'm getting a little too old to do that. You know, so what I'm asking is, so Mr. Smith, when he was there, he said he was going to look into the possibility of looking at the permit to see if that slot can be opened up. But no one's ever gotten that to me. And now since this last rain in October, I'm approaching to the board to find out what can be done to alleviate that much water that comes down Windwood Cave, like a flood that goes through the easement, goes up over the receptacle. Blows out my potter one every time.
Is it going down that whole street and no exit at all, except when it gets to the end?
What happens is if you go, I'm, I'm going down Windwood Cave, right?
Yeah.
Water floods comes down this way inside the street, water comes down this side of the street, it merges right at the easement. And it's like a flash flood that goes across easement to the receptor. Goes up over receptacle and then it goes across the swirl that I made. It goes up over the swirl. And every year, I, that big cypress come in and fix the ball.
What we were talking about before, fixing those swales or whatever on, that's one of the blocks. Is that part of the problem? Why so much water is going down there?
The, the system was designed to collect the water from the street on the caves. Uh, not, not Cave Drive itself. Cave Drive itself, a lot of that water goes over to those lakes that we've got on the east side. Uh, but the water, you know, the individual cave streets, there's, uh, two basically outfalls from the roadway. There's basically what I call a mid-block drainage, and that's where we're just talking about putting the grates, eliminating it. And, and then there's also at the very end of the street is where there's a swell that goes down to that control.
Still lots of lights at the end of Sunset?
Yes, uh-huh. And, and the swales were designed to be flat to achieve the water quality. There was no slope put in there. They're all supposed to be flat and hold the water, hopefully letting go down. And then it, 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 a real large starb, of course, then it would discharge through the, uh, structure. Uh, the, the slot was sized based upon so many cubic feet per second of water being released. Uh, and it has, has to do with the environmental issues and so forth. Uh, to change that would require a permit, re, uh, permanent modification, if it's even possible. Uh, if anything, some of the rules have gotten more stricter as far as discharges and so forth. Uh, i- i- it's a complicated system, uh, and the way things were set up, too, as far as the drainage easements back there being based upon property lines that fall into the canal themselves. And so the, the, the original capacity was probably never there, what was intended.
So originally, it was done by a developer, right, years ago, when they built the street?
Swales were put in since I've been here, the back swales.
Well, the, the back squalls, I, now, it's history a little bit. It was put in with some of the original bond issuance money back in the early nineties, from what I can tell. Uh, so it was bonded, uh, paid for by the overall district. Some of that worked down there in the caves itself. So it is a district asset, actually, the, the drainage swales, and that's why we try to monitor and so forth. But, you know, the, the, ideally, some of those swales should be twice the size they are back there, but we can't because they fall out of the canals.
Where does the water end up? It goes through a settling swell, then into the canal, is that what happens?
Correct, basically.
Can we make this, could we make the swell deeper?
But that's what happens now. There's so deep and they're holding all the water.
Well, we, we, if you did try to do something by making them deeper, you'd have to make them all deeper, uh, so they're uniformed back there. Uh, you know, with the swell, because of the way the land lays out of the property lines, it varies as far as width back there and so forth. And right now, the swales are probably where they need to be. You don't want them much deeper because people do need to transverse them for getting over to the docks and so forth.
Can we divert the, the, uh, north and south flows, so they don't both go into the same place?
We'd have to find a place to put that water that is generated. And right now, short of buying more property and so forth like that, the district, there really is no place to put that water.
And even if you had someplace, you'd still have to have a permit modification.
Yes.
And it's, uh, it's pretty difficult. Even opening that slot, you're going to have to have a permit modification.
Right, and show, show some reason why and how you're going to compensate for that. Uh, you know, there's potentially some ways you could try to compensate, but again, it's going to potentially be additional maintenance for the district and so forth. That, there's things like bio beds and all kinds of creative things, rain, rain gardens and all kinds of ways you're going to start achieving some water quality. But they, they, they cost and also added maintenance.
There were no drains going down either side of the street?
The only drain you've got going down either side of the street is that valley gutter that's right against the pavement. And about mid-block, it directs either east or west. And then it gets, the one that's going, when it goes to the east, it goes to those outfalls that are mid-block or so, and then they go back to the back ditch. Eventually, everything goes to that back ditch and discharges at the end of the house, or at the end of the.
What's, what's that back ditch look like on the rest of your block on your side?
Well, that's my question. My question is, when we built our house, we lived next door to them. Benson came out and told us what the grade needed to be. So the two of us are the lowest in the community. No one else has to do that.
Well, we, it fills in.
Everybody, everybody that's new is, yeah, do it, may be, maybe do the same thing.
Yeah.
But it's the older ones, because over thirty years, we've had some of those other ones that are more original, their swales fill in. We, we've, as far as like capital improvement and so forth, it's something that needs to be addressed. Uh, we've, we've, capital improvement plan, we did put Newport ahead of that. The case at this point, is they do also have some drainage issues. We're, we're, in my mind, we want to hold back a little bit on the caves until most of this new construction's done, so we can get in the back swells just once and do a comprehensive cleaning of them and re-establishing the, the swell grades at that point.
Isn't there, isn't there a certain amount of footage that you need to have your swell? I mean, some people are putting things in the swell.
Well, we've got to tell them to remove them. Nothing's supposed to.
And if you let us know if there's something in the swell, we'll go out and investigate, but I have not gone out there and walked all the swales. We can have somebody do that. But we do try to catch that.
I have blowouts, and my other neighbor has had blowouts, so he brought his swell up, so I get all his water now.
And that's a no-no.
You can't.
No.
No.
Well, and I asked, when they did my swell years ago, and I've been out there over twenty years, I asked, what about the maintenance? And they said, if my swell changed, where, let's say, someone came next to me and I was too high, I'd have to bring it in line, and it would be my expense, not the CID.
Well, hopefully, the people who build next to you, if anything, are a little bit lower than you.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, but that's what's happened, so that's.
Yeah, and, and over time, over twenty years, you know, you get quite a bit of buildup inside those swales because of grass clippings, uh, still from construction going on next to you and so forth.
I mean, I don't flood, I don't have any problems, but I do have, further down the street, they had a lot of blowouts. And, uh, I don't know the whole story. I know their pool is right at the swell, and that caused some of the problem. But they have pipes going into the canal.
That's a no-no.
Oh.
That's a no-no.
Well, this is years ago. I don't know if they have had permission.
No, no, they, they had to put a French drain in this.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, that, yeah, because they completely.
It was that bad.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they had, that was all part of the deal. When they built it, they had to put in the French drain, and that's why the big pipes were there to take the water.
Okay.
The grade should be the same as the swales.
Yeah, the water goes flat. Water looks from lowest point. And, uh, his backyard, his is, it, what is, what's the, what is it, five and a half inches it's supposed to be, or?
Well, the, the soil system was part of an overall plan.
I know.
Right, yeah. And so there's, they might be at the end, and that's why it's so low.
That shouldn't matter if everybody was.
Well, everyone can't be the same.
They have to flow. Actually, the swales are, are, were, were planned. They're all supposed to be at the same elevation behind all the houses.
How does it fold it? Close down the street.
Percolation. Percolation, plus it would, you know, it would seek that outflow, the outfall structure.
There's only one outflow structure.
Yeah, one at each end.
Right.
Yes. So essentially, that's the way it.
Percolate to the soil and then go out, correct?
Correct.
And each house is supposed to be able to, uh, take the water off their roof in their swell. Is that not correct?
Correct. Eventually, it's gonna wind up there.
So we get everybody's, we get our neighbors, we get the whole street and it just.
If you're the low spot, it's gonna accumulate at yours first.
But it's in, in its simplest form, regardless, we have residents that have a problem and it's a big one. And we need to give them a solution and we're not. So how do we do that? Because it's, it drives me crazy that residents are this upset. So we need to get it fixed and they're right, they have the right to be upset. We need to get it fixed. How do we fix it? It's on us. How do we fix it?
Change that pipe? Can we change the pipe from, um, the one inch slot? Can it be made bigger?
It, it would require a permit modification and that may be part of the overall solution. Uh, but it would also require, you know, we, we need to achieve a certain amount of water quality before discharge. Um, and that, that, that creates.
There's no place to put a.
There's no place to put some of that without being very creative perhaps.
David, I guess, perspective, if the soon forsaken discussion, the initial system was built according to the specifications of the cross-section of those swell. It's a twenty foot wide swell. I don't know what slope fingers, how it would look. But if people had filled it in without CID approval, therefore, they're reducing the capacity of that swell and impacting the district stormwater management system.
Well, even myself, all the clippings, I've been there twenty years. It looks fine to me because the water is flowing.
It's saturated.
But it doesn't. I'm talking about the people that deliberately placed the building.
Yeah.
I mean, you have two components. You have the routine maintenance of, I know, Cary County takes position that these properties responsible maintain swell.
Right.
And that's how private, rather than my whole, so, uh, but to the extent that people are filling swales in without authorization, that's a whole different story.
And I don't think that's the situation. People aren't filling them in.
Yeah, I don't.
I've heard one of the residents indicate.
Yeah.
Yes, he brought a swell up.
He brought, he's brought a swell up to that five and a half inch mark or whatever you're, he had it, he had it surveyed.
That's a lot.
And he brought it to whatever, uh, cross-section, cross-section it was supposed to be. But that's why I say where he lives, because I've walked during that start and, uh, the, uh, I can't believe that that area that you're talking about is not too low. It's gotta be lower than what you are, even over by your back all the way. You got two hundred feet all the way around. And, um, and it, it's just not, the whole area doesn't fill up the same. It only fills up at the end of the street. So it's not, it's not right. I mean, it's not, if, if we had to do anything, we'd have to survey all the, uh, all the swales.
Yes.
And identify what time it's low and then correct that. Yeah, and that's, that would be part of the mediation plan, you know, as far as bringing the swales back as close as we could to the original plans.
Right.
Uh, would be to go do the survey, find out what the existing conditions are, and then start re-establishing all those swales to the proper rates.
I think we need to do it.
That's big money.
Well, but I mean, they got a problem.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, Mike. My name is Phil Levy. You have another issue. A lot of those swales that you think you have an easement on, you don't have an easement. There was been a lot of erosion and a lot of the houses that I'm surveying right now, your easements are actually in the Gulf or on the riprap and you have zero control of what the owners do on their property because your easements have been eroded over the years because of lack of maintenance. So a lot of these houses that I'm surveying right now, your easements are inside the Gulf. So those swales, if the property owners do not want to cooperate, I don't know how you plan to have all these easements to go in one particular line across all these. And that's why you see a lot of these houses, their stem walls that they have for the pools or what, are so close to their bank of the water because when we take the twenty feet easement that you have, your property line is inside the Gulf of Mexico. Take twenty feet away, you're in the riprap. The rest of the property belongs to the owners. I know that you're trying to get servitude on some of them, but if they don't want to give the servitude, that means they would have to be giving up thirty-five feet on one case that I'm doing now. You request a fifteen foot easement. That means they would be giving to you the CID or whatever, thirty-five feet of their property so that you can do the swell. And they don't have to do it because you're easements. And I had just had it surveyed from a surveyor check. What they call is a line because the county's aware that there has been some erosion and they have an imaginary line that they call, and even if I take that line and take the CID easement, you still don't have access. So a lot of these property owners, if they do that and fill up their swales, I don't think you guys have the license to make them dig out or do whatever they want because you don't have an easement on it. You have an easement on the side, on the other side, it's done, Gulf, there's no easement.
Uh, Joe's partially correct. I, I don't know if we've had a lot of erosion of the original banks themselves. Uh, they were rip-wrapped originally and so forth. Uh, what happened when the subdivision was planted, however, the property line of those lots extend out to the mean high water level. That mean high water level is out in the canal to many places. And then the drainage easement is based upon it being twenty feet from the property line, which may be out in the canal, into the property. So in some cases, it, there's very little or those, very little swell, uh, drainage easement left on the properties. And we've tried to, historically, tried to work with the property owners to at least give the best we can in through there. That's why you're seeing some of your regular swales and so forth. You're seeing, like Joe said, the pool sub walls being basically the face of the drainage swell. Uh, so we're, we're just trying to do the best we can for what we, we have out there.
Well, so how are the homes allowed to go?
What would a solution be, like in your case?
What he's saying is there isn't one.
So if, if they flatten it out, who's gonna suffer by that?
They are.
If they don't do a swell.
They're gonna.
Well, if, if they go high, like you just said earlier, water's gonna go to the lowest point.
Right.
It's gonna stay on either side.
The neighbors on the side are gonna have the issue. That'll be continuing until whoever has their property line in and going deeper is not gonna help. So I was told I should go to four foot nine, uh, below the finished floor. By doing that, I just booked one of my houses in jeopardy of getting blowouts because I'm much lower than any of my neighbors. So that's why I took the surveys and you, and there is no easement there, so technically I can go to any level I wish. Making my house a lot higher is just gonna create problems for the neighbors unless their easement, I didn't do the surveys on them, is the same thing. Their water line, but somewhere, some, somewhere down the line is gonna have a problem.
That sounds like that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what, that, that's from the get-go too. It's not necessarily happening. It's.
But it's not just that. Those, those, those pipes, those three, those one inch pipes everywhere with the rainfall that we're getting, that's not sufficient. And another problem too is now there is a lot of construction. A lot of these empty lots that were not developed, were low, very low.
And the water's sad.
Water's sad in there. Now they're not and now the water is looking for somewhere to escape. It's hitting the roads. I mean, my street wilderness, uh, uh, Windward, last rainfall, which was just a rainfall, I couldn't even get out of the street because there was so much water on the road. I literally had to turn around and get my SUV to get out because I didn't want to go through that water. Because we have three little one inch pipes that do nothing, just a regular rainfall. This house, I live on the same street as him, it's literally, they're not here in summer. I live here full-time in the summertime. This driveway is completely underwater until the drains. It goes up so high and it's contrived. I mean, that, that's, if we get a hurricane, a lot of water, I mean, there's a lot of liability issues that we have here because we know about these problems. They haven't been taken care of at the neck of the fence. These homeowners are looking possibly to have a good lawsuit against the CID because it's not being addressed and we know about it. And I'm not looking to pay a whole bunch of water fees because it's not being addressed. The situation has to be addressed. These pipes are Joe, that there is no more empty lots for these houses, this, this rain to accumulate on. All the lots are being built up. Okay, and something has to be done. A lot of owners have done what, what I've done and everybody else, put our own drainage pipes in. I mean, I have one in between my property and his. That rain is coming down so hard. You could see the water go down that drain because I had three blowouts. I had enough to spend any money on blowouts, like if it was a siphon. It was running down like this. It was unbelievable. It was like a siphon. But that was my solution, that I, I, I can take care of the water without having to pay for more blowouts.
I think another problem is with all this new construction, they're building higher than the homes that are already here. And they're forcing the water back.
That's the FEMA.
Right.
That is.
I know, but that's another problem we're having.
Well, no, they're supposed to try to change that. Okay, the fact that we are, okay, so what we have is a lot of communities, we have, uh, what we call, uh, I forgot the name, um, uh, anyways, you can only build so much property, including pools and driveway, to, to the amount of land that you have. Okay, because we're on the Gulf, it doesn't exist. You can build as big as you want, mark or something, because the water can really drain into the Gulf and not flood up your neighbors. So it's, uh, and we're allowed to do that. So a lot of times we build a permit into the county, they say, no, you have to, you have to respect, you know, forget the name of it, there's a name. And then we send back and the mail say, no, we're, we're not, uh, we're not, uh, governed by that. We're, we're on the Gulf. They say, okay, build as big as you want. But before, you have to have a certain amount of green space so that the water from the roof everywhere else can drain. I don't have that situation. So it's not a terrible situation. It's just that the way, the water can just easily go over the Gulf. Yes, it's supposed to filter and do everything like that. Most of the times it does and it drains because everything is sand in our community. But on those big, big storms or hurricane, there could be flooding for the blowouts. There's so many blowouts. This year particularly because of all the construction. I mean, I just drive around and see so many blowouts that people are prepared. People are gonna get fed up spending.
Do you want to just refer this to staff who'll come back next meeting with a recommendation? I don't know if the month's enough time, David, but.
Right, right. We were not gonna be able to develop a full plan.
No.
Uh, well, we, we can come up with maybe a, a thought about where we might want to try to take this thing. Uh, it is a problem out there. Fortunately, you know, the berm is gonna be lower than what the finished floors of the houses. So that's the first place we're gonna see the water go over. So it's not an issue of the houses being in danger. It's the art flooding and so forth that we've got out there.
No, the, the water has come up close, especially in this case, the water has come up close enough to this house that it could be situated.
Well, can we make sure, you know, it doesn't take much for the water to stop going through that thing either. It only takes a couple of branches or a couple of leaves down at the base of this thing because of the way it flows up. You, you've seen it.
Yeah.
So, I mean. And I think Chris takes a look at those on a regular basis, the outfall structures as far as the monthly reports.
And he cuts a lot of the vegetation around it, uh, to keep.
But it goes back to the original permit that we're restricted what we can discharge. But when I still look at his property though, that base area looks way lower than everybody else's. I mean, it does, did we ever survey it? Did you ever look at?
Yeah, I went back. We worked with Mr. Vincent when we were building the house. We had also.
Yeah, but that, and it looks even lower. I, I, I mean, you can eyeball it.
It is lower.
And it's, again, maybe part of that overall plan where we, we, we need to go in and, uh, whether we do all of them at one time or whether we take one, one K down at a time as far as doing some, uh, doing the engineering and so forth. We may need to do with, if we do need to get district permit, we probably want to address it all at the single district. I just meant if we couldn't survey his, you know.
We can.
In his case, probably, I did look at the other cases, but in his case, I did look at it. The opening is too small for the amount of water that goes in.
It makes the same on my block. That's another, that's a regulation.
All the structures and all the ends of the case have the same opening in it, which is too small for the amount of water. Well, unfortunately, the district, the Southwater Water Management District, when they permitted the project, that was the determination they made that that was gonna be the maximum size opening that would be allowed.
Yeah, but you can, and you go to the county and ask them to make it bigger.
No, it's not the county. It's the water managers on the street.
Yeah, it's water manager.
You, we, you can ask anything you want. It's getting the permission and meeting the rules and regulations.
Dave, let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question.
But if they open it to one.
Right.
You're really not gonna.
No, 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 but just let me ask you a question. If he's, not him in particular, but if a builder, if a builder, not him, if a builder has no problem legally to, to raise the land for FEMA, which is right, and because of the canals, the runoff is not an issue and it can blow off the roofs of the house and everything, and there's no problem whatsoever. Why does this have a problem? What's the difference? The water's going in the canal either way. Why?
Yeah, but it's not being filtered. That's.
It's not being.
But neither is that.
Well, yeah, that's the problem. The problem is when this place was built, the water management said, this is how you're gonna discharge stormwater runoff into the Focke Union. And that was, you had to go into the swell and then drain through the swell and into the Focke Union. If what you're saying is in the area where he is, if you put a great big pipe and you just drained it directly into the Focke Union, you would be in violation of, of that. That's the problem. It's, it all goes back to how this place was built and what was allowed back then to allow this place to be built, which is, as I said, interesting because it's in this report that we're getting about how difficult it was to build here and that's the reason why.
Well, how can it be less restrictive now for him or somebody like him?
What do you mean less restrictive?
He said, as a builder, not him.
Right.
But a builder, they can build those new houses.
Right.
And they flow north and south, front to back. They can dump anywhere. There's no place for the water to settle because it goes into the canal. Did I hear that right?
Right. When we submit, when we submit a drainage plan, they want the drainage to go front to back. They don't want it to go to the neighbors.
But you didn't put any separate pipes in or anything for drainage? It's surface flow.
But just, just to answer your question, that pipe is there in, in between this lot. I'm just saying, make the hole bigger and that might alleviate a lot of this problem.
The hole I'm talking about is through the weir and indirectly into the Focke Union. That's, that's the only way to drain out those swales. But that's the way this hole is draining directly into the Focke Union.
Right.
It's already there. It's had a controlled, controlled discharge.
It's controlled.
Yes, it's a controlled discharge. The idea is that, that those swales and the roof and so forth would catch the first flush of the oils and pollutants and so forth that come off the roads and off the roofs and settle into the ground. Uh, it's catch that first flush of water quality.
Like, you know, like for example, I mean, silos fences, if you have grass, that is considered a silo fence. If there's grass between you and the canal, that is considered, you don't need, that is, that is a filter. Grass is a filter. All these cases, there's grass. The water is gonna come off the roads. The oil and everything else is gonna filter through the grass. It's gonna hit that hole and it's gonna drain out. If it doesn't, if it's not there and everybody fills in their swales, the water's still gonna go.
David's not the one that has to be convinced. The water management.
We're not trying to convince.
So it's the water management is.
So how do we bring them in? We gotta fix the problem.
Well, I just like to look.
Send it to staff and they'll come back with a report.
Yeah, right. Or talk with the ma-, water management.
You know, it's what we're doing. Part of the analysis, we could, what, if any, kind of, have some more water management stand up. Because if you have a swell system that is there.
Right. Well, it can't exist because of, unfortunately, the way things got planted and easements established.
Yeah, that's, that's a big challenge.
I think what might be helpful is that staff will be get the address and the information from various people as to what your experience is, we can file that. And David can look at that and come back to the board with the report, January card word.
That's a good idea.
Because we have all these different people, different locations.
Yeah, but all you're doing is fixing this problem. The water's gonna go to the neighbors.
No, he's gonna look at the entire.
It needs to be universal.
It has to be the whole project.
I mean, it's happening on my street too.
If I tried to raise that, which I thought it would, what I thought it's gonna do is just gonna be, it's gonna be, now this thing, I'd raise it up. That water's just gonna get more of a chance to go over the ground into the canal.
Right.
So I'm getting the stats on it, please. We know we put a system in thirty years ago. And we thinking, okay, this is the way we're gonna do it. Over time, things change. So we just can't sit here and go, well, listen, thirty years ago, this is how we thought we were gonna do it. But it's not like it was thirty years ago. That amount of water that comes down from the K, I'm being redundant, I apologize, that's upriver. And that little one inch slot, I watched that water go hit that receptacle like a river, up over the receptacle to the canal. I'm going, it was just, open up, open that up. It's going down like, down the easement, which is like Joe says, it's all grass. I'm saying, it's gonna filter out to there. What's the difference if it filters there or it filters out to a swell? But if it alleviates some of that water from not sitting somewhere, I can't even cut my lawn until that water dries out. There's so much water.
You, you, the, you know, the, under the sidewalk part that we're talking about, he said he couldn't get down the street? If that would flow out quicker, that might alleviate some of it heading, uh, west. If we put those in, that may help somewhat, okay? Because the, the water's backing up there and everything's going.
Yeah, it's back up there and then it goes down the street.
It doesn't, it doesn't have a chance to flow out so that more is flowing down.
It wouldn't help the end of the street drainage, however, all that water eventually winds up at the end of the streets.
Well, even in the backswing, but see, then it's still gonna work its way through.
It's gotta work, there'll be a little time to finish there, but it's still gonna all eventually get there.
Right, it takes a while, but that would allow it to fill up as.
What it's gonna help is, especially it's gonna help with the roadside drainage, getting the water off the roads that will make the roads a little more passable quickly.
Yeah, and as far as.
But it's gonna transfer to this way eventually.
But as far as the blowouts and the new construction and whatnot too, I don't know if the, the membrane's being affected. Doing some bringing in new stuff, and they're bringing in bobcats, I don't know what happens to that membrane. If the membrane gets knocked down, then you're gonna get a blowout, or the membrane gets ripped, you're gonna get a blowout. So it could be some of that too. I don't know what his membrane looks like.
Well, we're, we're, yeah, we're seeing, especially with the new houses, a lot of the builders are bringing in the riprap in advance and reinforcing the berms in the back.
Yeah, but then I put down membrane, they just put that bunch of stuff, membrane's already there.
Yeah, membrane should be already there, but now it may be disturbed too at some point.
You know, I don't know, because I know where mine blew out, it wasn't any recently, it was before, um, Irma. Mine blew out right around where they put the pylon, because the pylon would be.
Disturb the membrane, disturb the riprap.
It blew up and all that's, ends up, it's in the canal, so, yes.
But, yeah, the, the, the system theoretically, when the water gets so high to protect the houses and everything else, it is gonna blow over the berm if it can't get out through the end structure.
Well, we had one blowout on the road too, and that was that same year that I had it. It blew out all the way to the guy's lanai.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was gone.
Seen that.
The whole, the whole swale was gone, everything was gone. They moved the house and all the H-house.
I had to get a backhoe.
But that's right, that's right, the north, south, that was right where the north, south sidewalk drains were that are such a problem. So again, that created a problem for that person because it just went there, followed a brush line, followed its hedges.
Well, the water's accumulated to one point until there's so much pressure at that point that it's blowing out. If the water was going instantly everywhere, it would handle most of the problem, but it's just accumulating. And those are two points on my street that is just filled up to swimming, you can't. And now we're talking about, yeah, heavy rain, not a hurricane rain, just heavy rain, and it happens all the time. It happened yesterday again, there was, we had rain and it started flooding again, and that was normal rain. It just accumulates, there's a low point, water's gonna look for the least resistance, it's gonna sit there, build, 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 until there's so much pressure and there's nothing that's gonna support it.
So the next steps to move this along is let's get it looked at and talk to South Florida Water, see if we can make a global warming solution to it, something like that.
But the thing is.
Some kind of an excuse to get it blown up.
As soon as you talk to Southwest Florida Management or the DEP, you're talking big ticket, and they're gonna do the whole, they're gonna do everything.
They're probably gonna want us to mitigate somehow to open up the openings bigger or whatever. So we, we, again, we're limited with land that, that's available to us, so we may have to look at some, I wanna say more creative solutions for it.
May, can I make a suggestion like she just pointed out? On our street, for example, and I didn't look at the other ones, those three pipes, okay? They go underneath the sidewalk, there's not enough water, and you can see that that is definitely a problem over there. On the other side of that sidewalk, the dirt is higher than the, the, so it just sits there, it doesn't have a chance to do what it was designed to do. It was designed for it to flow in between the two houses and get into the Gulf of Mexico. And there you have.
You've said it, you've said it, it spilled over naturally.
There you have your easement, and you could do something about it, but that you can't do anything about because you're even washed out or in the Gulf of Mexico. But in between the houses, you still have your easement, and if that is just dug out, put down some sod and maintain over the years. Since I'm living here, I've never seen anybody maintain it. If that would be maintained, that would take a lot, relieve a lot of the pressure that's going to him and that's accumulated in the house. And there you have your easement, and you can do what you want.
And, and that's part of the, it's gonna be the part of the CIP and how the, how the board decides to fund that CIP as far as when you wanna undertake some of these drainage projects and how much you wanna buy it off, because it does have an effect on what the assessments are gonna be to the residents. Because it costs money and it's not cheap to do all those improvements.
Unfortunately though, but it's gonna cost a lot more if we do get flooding and damage to the houses and lawsuits, it's gonna be a lot more money.
Those north and south locations underneath the sidewalks, right on the other side, just hedges, so, both sides.
And that is an easy thing for the CID to go take a look at that.
Problem.
And see that, that, and there's an easement there, like I keep repeating myself, it's easier to either clean it out or have the owners say, stop, get your bushes out of there, because they're completely blocked. That, those pipes are there and they do absolutely nothing, absolutely nothing, because on the other side of that pipe, the dirt is at the level of the sidewalk, there's nowhere for that water to go except to this house. And I'm sure that's the same way on all the, all the communities.
I think that we can at least address that before the rainy season, we should.
Yeah.
Take a look at. East, north and south.
But that same problem is on my block because of all the new construction, all the water, it's not the construction's fault, but all the water now because of the other homes is now all laying at the end of the street.
We surveyed those lots, we have to bring in a ton of fill.
Yeah.
A ton of fill because they're so low, and to get them to the FEMA level, you need probably sixty, seventy loads of dirt to fill it up to get it to the FEMA level. The FEMA, and like, in January, the FEMA raised it, I think it's nine inch, well, the FEMA raised it a foot, and the county wants it nine inches over that, so we have to respect that. And actually, before we even, once we do that, once we do our, our slab, we need to get a spot survey before we even go vertical to make sure that we're higher. All electronic equipment, everything has to be higher than that eight points, I think it's eight point seven, not.
Eight point nine.
Yeah, eight point nine over.
Thinking of that.
Yeah, so in it, in its range. But I see an easy fix to a lot of the problems, like you said, those little sidewalks, open those up, let the water flow before you get into big expense, see how that works. I think that'll alleviate a lot of the problems, this is nowhere for that water to go. It's always gonna look to the lowest point, which on most of these houses in the industry. Clean that out, that water's gonna go to the, it's gonna go find its way into the Gulf of Mexico. There's grass, that'll pretty still, and nobody can sue, you can't, you can't control water, you can't, the county can't see, oh, you look sick, water can't go that way, it's gonna go that way, there's nowhere to stop it.
Okay, I just taking a look at that.
I understand. Thanks.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
I'm Lisa Sager, I'm one of the ones that got, got the nice letter. All I wanna say on that is, you know, there's gotta be a better way of doing it. I don't even live there yet. If you go look, we had rain yesterday, it was all cleaned out. I went there this morning, again, the sidewalks, it's gonna happen, there's nothing I can do about it.
But I, I live on the block you're building.
And I did mention this to you, that there was a problem with all that, but you're the homeowner,
and we're notifying the homeowner and the builder, not just you.
Right.
And I, I guess, I had a lot of problems with my house because I was not notified, and the builder was something else.
All I'm saying is, I think there's lessons to be learned when you, as a homeowner.
What's your solution? What's your solution with all that on the road?
I have a bad taste in my mouth with the CID, this is my first meeting, probably my last. My point is, is that I understand that you guys wanna get, I mean, I'll go back over there and I'll take a shovel and I'll try to clean it. I can't help the rain, I can't help it, I don't know what you want me to do about it. Am I supposed to be over there every day cleaning it?
I guess what you're saying is blocking the accumulation, there's three houses there, and it's blocking the water flow, and people are flooding, and that's all we're saying, if you don't block this.
There's a drainage issue, like you said.
A possible solution for you if you don't wanna be cleaning it after every rain?
Yeah.
Is to actually install a physical silk barrier between the sidewalk or your property line.
People coming in every day.
They can open up and close it up each day.
And the builder should be responsible for that, he knows what the requirements are.
If we're talking about these swales too, our house is higher than the neighbor next to mine because of FEMA changed it.
Right.
So if you guys are gonna come in and say these new houses have to be disinfected, you better start with some of those old ones, because what's gonna happen is because we're higher, we're gonna stop his water because we're gonna be higher than what Lenny's. And that's gonna be a problem. So if you, if you're not starting from the end and working it all the way down, eventually someone's gonna stop the water. And, and we will stop it because Lenny's house is lower than our house, and if you take the four point seven or whatever, doesn't take a rock of science, if I'm up higher, my four point seven is gonna be higher than his, and so his water is gonna get stopped. I'm just saying, if you're gonna look at it, you can't just say, these are all the new houses and we're doing the new houses because the old houses are gonna have a problem.
I think you think we're blaming the new homes, we're not. What we're saying, since the new homes have started, now we have something else we have to look at, that's all we're saying.
That's not the way that Leonard exactly said it, but my point is, is maybe we should take some lessons on, hey, welcome, glad you're, you know, glad you're coming here, but, you know, we see some issues, whatever. It wasn't a glad you're here, it was, hey, you're building a house and these are the issues. I'm just saying, just for new homeowners or anybody coming into this area, it's not a very welcoming, that's all I'm saying.
The silk barriers, why, when a new home's built?
They're not going up.
They're not up, and they don't stay up, they're, they're never up.
And this would have eliminated.
Again, that's not a CID problem, that's a county problem.
Yes.
But there, there are no silk barriers, you know, at all on most of these, of the new buildings, why is that?
That's not correct, you have silk barriers on all construction sites, if there's grass in the berm, that's considered a silk barrier. So what you're saying is not correct.
I would disagree with you, Joe.
There's not a silk barrier.
I would disagree with you.
But there's been one silk barrier on my block.
Can I finish saying what I have to say?
Joe, show me where the silk barrier is on this house on the construction right now.
Yeah, I'll show you where yours is when you did on Venus Cave.
That's not arguing, that's not arguing.
It's easy to point fingers, okay? But the construction, this is a construction site, we have counties coming to inspect, we have actually an inspection for that. There is grass, that's considered a silk barrier, and, and we can't put one on the front of the street because there's heavy machinery going in and out. This is an inconvenience for everybody, it's understandable, I live in the community, I try to keep the sites as clean as possible. They are clean and safe as possible, okay? But it is a construction site, it's gonna be six months of a little bit of inconvenience, but there's no perfect world, there is rain. And your example is, okay, what you guys did on Venus Cave, perfect world, why was there so much dirt and debris on the street?
It's in the process of being correctly, Joe.
No, but so is this. So is this, so it's easy to point fingers.
You guys have a dual agenda that you should be following, we've just spent an hour on, no, no, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's why you got public comments at the end of the meeting.
But we were looking at that sidewalk thing, and we were moving forward with that, right?
Right, yes. Okay, where were we?
We'll get with the board after.
Yeah.
It'll be an agenda idea.
We talked in a previous board meeting about Sunset, yeah, Sunset Cave, we've got two drainage ways that aren't in easements at this point, they got way back when, thirty years ago, constructed outside their easements. There is gonna, I do need to get a survey done of those, where, plot lines, where we're looking to put those easements to see, make sure we don't have any encroachments within the standard easement area that we normally take. Looks like the cost for that's gonna be right around twenty-five hundred dollars. I just wanted to run that by the board before I have that done. There's no objections, we'll go ahead and get it done.
If this, if this guy is coming out, does he do elevation surveys too, or is it just?
He can do elevation surveys other places too, we can dovetail with some other things.
With that one at the back where they're talking at the end of Windward?
Yeah.
Check his level, because he, he, it just looks way too low.
We can go ahead and take care of that down at Windward at the same time. It'd be a little, maybe a little extra cost, but yeah, no big deal, we can get that done. But I just wanna run that by the board before I just arbitrarily had somebody come out and do that.
Yeah, we need to do that.
The last item I think I've got is, we got a proposal from a company called Aqua Store. They are the manufacturers, they built the two storage, two of the storage tanks that we have at the utility site. One is for the portable water system and one is for the irrigation fire system. Now, the water storage tank did have an interior inspection done last year on it, and they didn't find any, well, they were probably looking more for sediment, some major structural issues. But the other one has not been looked at. They're proposing to come and do an inspection of those two tanks. They won't be able to get inside the water tank because we can't really take it out of service. And it would require a diver to come in to do that. But they're, they're proposing to come over here and do it for about eighteen hundred dollars, the inspection. Again, it's more for structural aspects, make sure that there's no structural issues or repairs are needed to maintain those tanks in the long term.
They can't do that with cameras, fiber optic cameras?
We did that with the, the water tank, that's what they did with the water tank.
But I mean, like they do with septic tanks up north and stuff?
They do now, there is a company that has a rover or whatever, they will, they put in dioxide. So we have the water tank done, the drinking water tank, I have it done every five years, they just did it. The tank was okay, they did recommend that in the next five years, we replace the diodes in the bottom. But the irrigation tanks, it's not required by the DEP. We physically walk around and look at them, but I'm not, I'm not.
What are they made of?
They're made out of steel with their glass line, I believe.
Yeah, their class line, there's a process, and they hold up very well, especially in this type of environment.
So I'm not being a wise guy, they're glass lined steel, the steel would be the first thing to show a problem, I would think. What's gonna happen to the glass?
What happens is it corrodes off, the steel starts corroding and then it pushes the glass off and you have that blister forming. What they would also do is take, look at the nuts and bolts, because that holds together the panels. And that's probably the greatest weak link out there. Again, it's eighteen hundred dollars, it's, it's not a super big amount, but it, you know, but it might be a chance too, since they don't need to look at the interior of the water tank, I can get them to reduce the price a little bit too.
When was the last time it was done?
So, maybe drinking water tank was just done last year.
And this is a five-year program?
It's a five years, I have it done.
How about the other one?
The other one is not expired, so we don't have it done.
Right, so I hear what you're saying, it's preventative.
It's preventative. I know these, I wanna say nickel and dime things, but they can start adding up, I just want the board aware of it before we do some, authorize somebody to come in there and do the work.
We motioning any of those? Uh, yeah, I, we, we don't have an actual proposal. The survey, unless there's any objection, we're just gonna go ahead and do it. But the, on this tank inspection, we should have a motion not to exceed two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand, I did get a proposal from them, it's eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
But, but again, I wanna talk to them since they don't need to physically go inside the water tank. We can provide copies of the written report that we got done a year ago, they'll take a look at that and offer any comments they may have too.
So I could motion forward to, to do that, but not to exceed two thousand, have that in the motion.
In the future, and I don't mean you, Dave, I don't mean you, Dave, in the future, rather than say not to go over, I'd rather see bids and not give them a ceiling, because that creates competition. I'd rather see bids, so when we, whenever, all of you, whenever we have something coming in, I would rather you come to us, this is what we need done, I got three bids on it, and this was, and the lowest bid is not always the best deal, it isn't. But I'd like to see it in bids, because when we say not to exceed, the first thing somebody's gonna do is get right to that number.
But Ray, I think it's in our rules that at a certain amount, we go off the bid, another amount, we go off a proposal.
That's statute. But the only time that we ask you for it not to exceed is when we don't have an actual proposal. And otherwise, you have to wait a month to be able to do it. And it's something that everyone wants done quickly, such as the survey. You want that information, and he said, well, it shouldn't be any more than twenty-five hundred. I mean, it's not a bid, it's not a firm price, but he's gonna get it done. But there's no rush, right?
What I did with our, our, that survey is I actually talked to our in-house survey people, and they gave me a budget about, he said twenty-four eighty. I rounded it up to twenty-five hundred. With the Aqua Store price, they're the original people that saw that, they seem to be probably the best qualified to come in and do the follow-up inspections. Typically, they really like to do them every five years also, follow-up inspection.
You're saying Aqua Store does?
Yeah, the Aqua Store. So they, they, they are the logical one to do it in this case.
Yeah, they do an inspection, we didn't get a guarantee, any kind of warranty, anything?
No, no warranty per se, because it's out of the original warranty at this point, but they would. But they would alert any issues and then if there's repairs that be, need to be made, then we can look at either them doing it and giving us warranty at that point. But they're just gonna inform us if there's some issues. They, they, they don't have any records of either one of those tanks ever being inspected by them.
I think Liquid Engineering has done the, the drinking water tank since it was new. And I, I can get a quote if you want to wait for the next board meeting. I can get a quote from Liquid Engineering to inspect those, so at least you got two.
I would feel better. I don't like, I never have liked not to exceed. I just don't like it. That sign out front, it was not to exceed, we save money not doing not to exceed. I just don't like that policy. I'd rather we get bids or I'd rather we get accurate proposals upfront. And more than one proposal, that's how business is done. I just, I don't like throwing a number out there that they can get up to. I mean, we could be off by 500 bucks. In every one of these meetings, I've done this a year now, we're spending money at every one of these meetings. Every one of them, we're spending money. And it gets me nervous, okay? And it's 18 here, 2,000 there, 10 grand there, we're spending money. And it's not coming in anymore than it ever was gonna come in.
We're, we're not necessarily spending money over and above our budget.
But we're spending money and.
Well, we could have something budgeted, but we're not gonna spend all that without proposals or, or amounts.
Right.
Because we approved something, doesn't mean we don't have budget for it.
Well, but at some point, not to pour salt in the wound, this thing on, on Wilderness Cave, which I feel is extremely legitimate, we're saying, but it's the money, it's the money, but the money, the money. Yep, it is. And this is a little district we're running. It all costs money and we don't have that budgeted and that's the big ticket. So I, I don't wanna get back, I know we can't, but the thing is, if there are problems, we need to address the problems. And whether it's the, the circuit board on the fires, on the fire pumps, whatever it is, if one of these things pops up, we're not budgeting for it, because we didn't know it was coming. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. So, not to exasperate it, I just would like to see proposals in the future from everybody, not just you. And then we decide if we need to do it or not.
So there's a motion on the floor to go ahead with this, not to exceed 2,000?
Yeah, we've got a proposal from them. I would hold them to the 1,800 with the proposal. What I'm hoping to do is negotiate them down a little bit, based upon the fact they don't need to do the water tank interior.
And that's what I like to see happen.
But, well, when Mitch had the other one inspected, what did it cost?
I don't know.
You don't have it filed away in your brain? So, I mean, we could, we could base, we could base it off of that too, if we, we saw.
The one I had done will be more expensive, because they actually die the day. For the Aqua Store, they don't have that ability. So if you want them to inspect the inside of the tank, you have to take it offline and drain it for them.
Oh, right.
They put a man in there, that way we don't ever have to turn the water.
The, the email exchange with, with the rep from Aqua Store just yesterday, he said that since we did have it inspected by this other firm, they would take that inspection report and do a Curtis Ruby review of it, see if they pick up something that maybe perhaps they missed, or if they had something added, add to it, addition to that report.
Would you go there, gonna find something they missed?
Yeah, they may, yeah.
Yeah. Well, keep in mind, typically, a not to exceed is because at the board meeting, you guys had said, well, we'd like to include this or that. And instead of waiting a month, that's why we say, okay, well, if you wanna give us not to exceed, then we'll get it done.
Depends on what it is.
But, but that's the only time there is ever, and not to exceed doesn't mean that's what the price is gonna be.
Yeah, it protects us.
It, it, well, it, it expedites your project. And you can get it done and not have to wait a month. For, you know, and I can't think of a specific example, but, you know, maybe you approve the project for $2,000 and then it gets into it because you've asked for to cover this area or that, or, you know, and we can't do it for that.
Well, it's like a construction project. Typically, you try to build some contingency into it, whether it's 100% or so. And, and Mitch mentioned a perfect example this morning about the, the security cameras and how when they started to get into it, they found they weren't able to use the fiber optics because there was an issue there. Surprise, the things like that do come up during construction.
Exactly.
It's not a perfect world.
Exactly.
And that's why you must build contingencies into your project, that you do have some ability to control that, you know, help out with those on proceed. And you put safeguards on it, the engineer, district manager, taking a look at those up. Extras and making sure they're fair and reasonable, you got a good price on them.
So we're back to not to exceed 2,000?
What's the second?
It was.
It was. We, we need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we just did a not to exceed.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So, that's, we're still, that's still an option for the board to consider.
That's right.
And again, I consider a contingency, if we, if we go over that 1,800, I'm gonna talk to Cal about it, make sure we all feel.
Yeah, I don't want it, yeah, I don't want it to stop dead in the water and wait another month.
Well, and, and if we've got a not to exceed, I typically let the chair know that. So.
I, I think that's all I've thought underneath my part, but maybe something down the line.
You got a beating in yourself.
I know.
And now we're into district managers' report.
Okay, you've got the financial report and, you know, the, your money's coming in. Just at the beginning of the month of December, you've got another almost $600,000. So it's, now that's a total. They don't separate it. We have to separate it for, between the enterprise and the general fund, the O and M fund. Yeah, 545,358.
Yeah, that's what, everybody takes advantage of this account.
We are looking at, and we might be coming in with a recommendation for a change of banks. We did negotiate on your idle funds, 25, or 0.25 interest, which is higher than anything we've seen.
That's good, say that.
So, it's, and that's a minimum. So it, it can only go up. And they, it fluctuates with the market, but they have guaranteed, because they've got so many of our clients, that it'll not be less than 25. But we're still checking other banks. One of the clients that Tony and I both represent, Gateway in Fort Myers, their bank is guaranteed 0.3. But they just got bought out too, so I don't know if that's gonna stay there. So, Iberia is the bank. So we're, we're, we're monitoring that on a regular basis.
Yeah, Kelly, also, I'll check with the reports, where, bank, because the county has billions of dollars. And see what bank account they have that's possible.
Yeah, well, it has to be with the QPD.
If I can finish.
Yeah.
Yeah, the county are saying.
She's from the court.
Yeah.
She's billions of dollars, it's public funds, they're all in QPD.
Yes.
And they, she had, she hadn't arranged with one of the banks that was getting a great rate. And I don't know if that's still in existence. And with the rates are in the past, I've had one district who piggybacked on that.
Right.
And their, and their rate, their return was way over prior year's return.
Even their purchasing department, if they go out the bid and they get a bid, we should be able to piggyback on this.
I'll find out with Chris. I'll ask her.
Yeah.
Because that, one of my other districts did that a couple of years ago and they got it.
Right.
And that's one of the things that Ron always did, was to be so close with the, the county. And I assume David is too, just checking, making sure that we're getting the same rates.
Right.
So, yeah, if, if you.
Senator.
We've got a list, we've contacted a half dozen local banks that are QPD qualified. And, you know, so we're, we're doing a full analysis on, you know, no fees. They need to give us a, and Valley has given us a, a scanner that we use for your, your utility payments. And they, they don't charge you for any fees, so.
How much money's in there? Where would you put it?
I usually keep, the O and M's got about 800,000 on a regular basis and the water fund, maybe 100,000 minimum. But now, but now that's going up, I mean, you're.
Yes, we collect on the assessments.
Yeah.
It goes up.
Yeah, yeah, you've got a, you'll have, you collect about $100,000, so you're one and a half. But it fluctuates with the, behind the wheel.
Well, fluctuates coming in, because in person, we spend it through the year.
Right, right. The only regular funds you get are your utility bills.
Yeah.
So. Any questions on any of this?
No, but I have a.
Yeah.
Me too, yourself.
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
The, the standard contract fees and everything that we're paying. And we're over in engineering and we're over in legal, which I understand why we're over. Okay, as far as your versus budget.
Yeah.
Okay, we're over 3,700 on engineering and 2,300 on legal. Okay. But my question is on page two of the financials, the engineering says we're 3,700. On page five, it says it's 2,700, because it says the standard fee for him is 1,500 a month on one line and 1,000 a month on the other line. Not the same.
It's on the one line, is what you're saying?
Page two, page five. Look for engineering.
Well, we split it. Right down, I mean, that's done something manually. I, I.
The semiconductor.
Page five, that's two different funds.
Oh, look at the, look, maybe I'm wrong, something's not right. It's a.
Okay.
Standard fee is.
You're 27, now being over 2742?
That's on page five.
Yeah, that's.
Check page two. Check page two.
Okay, page two, you're over. We're engineering, that was a question, 3,742.
Yeah, $1,000 more.
Uh, well, that's because.
You, you got a.
There's more money budgeted in the water sewer.
No, you got us, you got us rated 18. Look at his, look at his standard rate. Contractual rate's different, one.
I'd have to look at the invoice on that.
No, there's no invoice.
The budget, the budget was, that's just the number that we put in, thank you. Because we don't know how much you're gonna use it. So we budgeted 12,000.
You estimate when you budget.
For, for the general fund and 18,000 for the water sewer fund. I, you guys said it, I, you know.
Oh, okay, I, I thought that was, you, like you said, I thought it was a split in half.
No, well, the, the bills as they come in, we split in half. But that, the variance is, one, there's more in the water sewer fund, because he does more work there. And as the bill comes in, then I separate, I, you know, try, the general one for the meetings, both for the attorney and for the engineer, I split those 50/50. But then he details his invoice pretty well and then I separate those between, you know, I challenge him to whichever line I.
That was the problem, he wasn't detailing his invoices. That was the last meeting we had, I wanted him to detail his invoices more like Tony's were. You know what I mean?
Some of the bills I know of the past, and I'm trying to improve upon that, based upon our conversation at last meeting.
Right.
But some of the previous bills, sometimes we had identified this was related to the, to roadway or to utilities or something like that. And we'll be able to get that now done, we'll take the whole.
Well, that's what I mean, you had, you, you got a lot going on, don't get me wrong, I understand that. But, you know, I, I need to know when it's for, like, the front property out there, the back property, or the water treatment plant, or, or the.
A lot of it.
Engineering, the, the.
On the invoices, Cal will mark, what numbers he's putting into where. So, my time, when I work on this, I have to work with the invoice too. So sometimes that helps to see where he's coming from. Sometimes clears up why he's charging it to that account.
Well, I don't care just about the charges to the account, I, I, I care about what I'm getting charged for. That's all. I just wanna break it down, so I know if he's working on the generator, if he's working on the sidewalk, if he's working on the water treatment plant, he's working on, you know, whatever. That's all.
Okay.
So you want a statement broken down?
Yeah, right, I want an invoice, not a statement.
More detail.
Yeah.
More detail. Ron used to give us an eight-page.
Yeah.
Report, invoice. Years ago.
I, I.
Yeah. I just wanted to see what it was.
But David's, this time I thought was pretty good. If you want more detail.
Why did see, I actually didn't even see.
This month he broke it down more.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Because I was looking for him when I was.
Yeah, the invoices that come under, so I write it in the file.
Yeah.
I, I keep a notebook of what I've been doing and basically almost on a daily basis, just trying to track it a little bit. Sometimes it's difficult because you're doing four different things at the same time on projects.
I don't hear your problem. So I have a, a motion to accept the financial statements. I'd like to correct that motion. I think what should be said is to accept the financial statements for audit.
Oh.
I, I'll second, I'll second that motion for audit.
Yeah, and that's, by audit, you mean your auditor at the end of the year?
At the end of the year.
Right, yeah. And that's why we always, that's why we always put in your financials, these are unaudited, it's, you know.
Right.
I mean, we have a CPA that audits us every month, just for our purpose, make sure that they're right.
But I think in the motion, if I say for audit, that means, you know, at the end of the year, the auditor can have changes.
Yeah.
Which they usually do.
They usually do. Very few though.
Aye.
All in all, any names? You in favor?
Yeah.
How she said.
Uh, the second thing, the insurance claim on that lightning strike. The, he just has said that, you know, we don't have any of the underground, I mean, that typically we don't. None of our communities, I don't think any of the cities or anything. But something like this, we've always been able to get a claim, even though it's not listed, because it'd fall under your liability. But the repair was minimal and so it really, I forgot what Mitch charged, but it was again, under your deductible. So that'll come off. The medium, 41 median drainage update or damage update, that, we talked about that. The mosquito spraying, I believe, you'll probably know better than I do, if the.
Is it working then?
Yeah, oh, the machine's working. I, I got a report on that. And Clark spoke with, their guy spoke with Chad and, sorry, you know, they haven't told me it's not. And then Chad usually lets me know if it's not been looked at.
And have no bites?
And we have the, well, this is with the actual equipment.
Yeah.
So, and then the duets was ordered, they, they should have it. So I don't think that's an issue. And he, and he understands what you guys have said, that, you know, the spraying is up to him. And, you know, that, you know, you're not gonna tell them to stop or to do it, so.
His fault, yeah.
I'm right anymore, I mean, not till you get, not till it gets.
Right.
Starts getting complaints and stuff. I, there's something biting at night, but I think just.
No, see them.
Yes, and you'll see them. The ERC transfer for parcel A and B, the southeast commercial, that was completed this morning. Everyone signed, they have paid the, the fee and so that's a done issue.
And Kelly, you, you'll have the transfer document and record, the official record of the proceedings.
Right.
So that anybody wants to track it.
Right. Would it go in the workshop or would it go in this one? I mean, or took the action at the continuation meeting?
It would go in the continuation meeting.
Okay.
All right. I would suggest. And then also, I think in the, the official, official.
The, the record of proceedings.
Yes.
It'd go in that meeting, record of proceedings. Okay, and Chris is listening, so he knows that. The historical book update, he gave you kind of a status report. Uh, he couldn't be here today, but he plans on finishing it hopefully next week before Christmas. If not, it will be completed before the end of the year. You'll have his full report and he'll be at the next meeting to discuss it.
It was very interesting what he wrote.
Well, and he is covering, uh, that report, that initial report covered, uh, three of the six items. So, then you'll have, but you can see from that report, the format that he's going to have.
Oh, yeah.
All of the information that he's attached, that he felt was important and supported what, you know, he's reporting.
That's why engineers do it.
Yeah, then you've got, uh, three more that'll be added, which would be the Orchid Coast Development and the issues around that. The South Hotel and the RP property for parcel thirteen. So, uh, let's see, the next thing would be the water bills and the shut offs there. Now, you'll recall that when the pandemic first hit, you guys said, uh, okay, we're no shutting off and it's, and you waived the late fees. Uh, then, I don't know, say, at least six months ago, you said, uh, yes, let's go back to normal, late fees and shut offs. Okay, which we've been doing. Now, we're at the point where the shut offs, we're getting ready to send them out. Uh, we've been communicating with the, there's probably twenty, twenty-five, but a lot of them have gone to automatic auto pay. And, but it hasn't hit this time, so they've been encouraged to come in and pay us and that's being done.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, there still might be maybe ten or a few others of those that said that, you know, but. Tuesday's the deadline.
Yeah.
And we'll be sending Mitch to go out, and I guess what I'd like to know is, can we delay that till after the holidays and not turn somebody's water off?
Happening.
Just before Christmas?
Because our bill is every two months, but not like the tenth of the month, every two months.
Yeah.
So, if I set up auto pay to pay, let's say by the eighth of the month, and your next billing, the due date, let's say, is the eighth, my payment isn't going to be there.
Well, auto pay, they just opt in from your bank, whatever it is.
Yeah, but you have to tell them what?
Yes.
Yeah, so if our billing isn't always due on the tenth of the specific month.
Right.
And it changes to the eighth, my auto pay is going to be late. So, I can see why some of them, you know.
Yeah.
Are saying that they signed on auto pay and against.
Well, that, no, they're, they're, they're.
He'll set the date for your auto. Yeah, no, they, the auto pay is set up when you go and take it physically out of the bank. So, if the fourth of October is the date you're going to make your payments, you go out and you take from everybody that's on auto pay, the fourth of October, and that's when it comes to.
Well, that auto pay, I don't trust anybody.
Oh.
I said.
Yeah. But you don't know what it's going to be.
Yeah, I, I get the bill electronically and then.
And then you said, you pay, so you're still paying it, you just paid through the bank. But the auto pay, now, the ones that we're concerned with just signed up for.
Yes.
And so, it's not going to hit for this bill, it's going to be for the next one.
But I would forgive it because of.
Okay, that, that's, you know, I, I think that's just the easiest thing to do, just forgive, we'll delay it, uh, till, you know, the second or third of, uh, January, third or fourth, whatever. You know, the, the, probably the Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday before.
Yeah.
These two people have a lot to do.
Yeah. So, uh, if, maybe if you don't mind if we could get a, uh.
Motion.
A motion to delay any shut offs, you're still got, you're not waiting any late fees, you're just.
Right.
The shut offs.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think that's everything I had. Uh, field report, it's, uh, I can quickly go through the follow-up items.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you guys have any questions, I'll get with Chris on that. The, uh, Kase Drive Landscape Light Repair, uh, all the electrical work is done, scheduled to be completed on, uh, uh, December sixteenth, which was yesterday. Uh, and he'll inspect it once it's done, but it sounds like we've got.
I was gonna say, you got, I was gonna say, this is part of the.
Yeah, that's part of the route, so it, I'll relay that to Chris. Uh, the monument painting, uh, until we get that license agreement, uh, we're not bringing that forward.
I have a, a question on that, um, that license agreement. I believe I read somewhere that the Three Acres will be closing sometime in December.
I think it's closing, okay, or.
So.
I think that's why Mrs. McMeese, your three, you get the signed transfer of the eight, so the ERCs.
Yeah, she's, she's all set, and they were closing, uh, the sale today.
So, what about this?
The new property owner will need to sign it as.
A, a new license agreement, right?
So, there'll be two separate license agreements. Ownership will track, these, I think, will be under different.
Yeah, okay.
This will only, this will only check that.
Yeah.
This will just be tracked that, yeah, right now.
Alright.
And I, I don't know if Mr. McMeese, McMeese has spoken with that buyer about.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Probably not.
Exactly, and if they do what they say they wanted to do, and then they put in the initial, um, discussion with the county. Uh, if they're putting in some sort of seven eleven or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
That's all coming down to be able to get in and out of there.
More than one.
So, they're not going to make that, well, I know what he said.
Yeah, he said he didn't sell it to, to just.
Well, yeah, but.
We'll find out.
We'll find out, if, I mean, we did look at, and I think that falls.
Plan.
Into our.
Well, well, the signage could, could be moved into that easement. The other thing that could happen as part of the overall development of that parcel, they may look to put some kind of monument side up too, that could incorporate the gaze on it.
That's what they're, right.
Yeah, or, or again, that may be something that we can try to negotiate.
At least we'll have an agreement with the one side.
They take out all those trees on the way in.
Yeah.
To make room, people are not going to be happy.
When this, uh, it's forty-eight hours, it becomes public record?
Oh, no, once it's created. So, it's done now? Once the document gets in the, Cal's hands or your hands, it's public record.
On the transfer?
No, no, I, I don't like.
It wasn't of the old owner.
Once. If, if closing could happen without us knowing about it, but the recordation probably after a later fix.
Right.
So, the closing passes time, you don't have to ever report the past time.
Right.
That's when the title passes, as far as in public, it's notice of transaction, that's when it's the first office. And they're pretty quick, I don't know how they are, it's pretty quick.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, right, I wonder if it's two months.
Well, the question was, was they take too much with the recorder, too much to show up?
Record. To get recorded and show up.
That's the title company, the opposing attorney's issue, as opposed to the clerk's.
Well, this ended up being Clark's, that's.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Clark's department has had a pass.
I agree.
Not here yet.
Okay, any questions, any, any issues with George's office, Paul Terry or I? I think we have direct pipelines or really.
Yeah, right.
Like I saw Crystal yesterday.
Uh, the grass at the parcel thirteen is getting deep and it's, uh, a war on them and, you know, got a crew and last time they tried to get up there, they said it's just too wet, but it should be dry.
It ought to be dry now.
Yeah, it'd be dry now. Uh, the stop sign, we sent everyone an update on that and, uh, so we're still trying to get the second stop sign put in, but Chris is taking care of the painting and the sign.
Right, the, the additional stop sign, uh, since it's going to be out in the right of way, we're going to need to go through the permitting process with that to get that approved. But again, it, it should be pretty straightforward. I, I just, we just haven't had time to do it recently, so we'll try to get that done for the next month.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, we're waiting for a proposal from Lykins on the Union Road that signed at the median at forty-one and. Terry, do you know? Is the sign on Kase Drive looks like it's brand new, is it?
My neighbor updated it.
Now, is that, is, it looks like it's a, like a plastic or some sort of a, a laminate sign?
He's, uh, very good at woodworking, so.
Oh, he actually made it? Are you talking about?
No, no, it was made, he, he, he did it and painted it, and now he did maintenance on it.
At the site tourism?
No.
No, the one right at the entrance?
Okay.
Yeah, but the, the one that says Kase Drive, he did that.
Okay, so, should we not make this one at the end of Union Road to look like the rest of them with the same material?
Um, well, he didn't make it.
No, but I mean, whoever did, I'm saying.
Lykins did.
Yeah, but you're, if they all look alike, if it's a new sign and you're changing it, you gotta do it.
Yeah, we didn't change it, he didn't change it, he just.
Well, now, if we're looking at that sign that we're talking about, replacing it with one just like it, we're, we're going to have to go through committee and, and. How your county is not the easiest, okay, county would work with. Okay. Okay, that's, uh, all Chris had on his report. If there's anything, you can send me an email or whatever you'd like to do and I'll get it to Chris office.
So, what are we doing about the sign? Are we going to ask him if we can pay him to refurbish that one or?
Uh, I don't want to insult my neighbor, he did it for the community and he's only seasonal.
Oh, okay.
So.
The material is different to it, so they're saying.
Yeah, he didn't charge us for it or anything. I don't want to take advantage of him.
So, the, the plan was what you guys had directed at the last meeting is that we're getting a proposal from Lykins. And they'll tell us what it is to fix it and to, you know, maintain it, to, to not upgrade it, you know, stay within the current permit.
Right.
Yep. That brings us to Tony.
Uh, Prep Mac lost its status, no update status.
Well, thank.
Yeah, a lot of it, again, the idea of what we've had for the conversation, the discussion, and so it's just status quo.
How long can that last?
As long as the party wants it, because the way the state or big order was that the action would be evaded, lost, fills their stands, parties, uh, no part of the order, each other, that the negotiations. We just made it, it's down made.
Okay. That's been, what, six months?
At least.
A lot longer than. If you want to, you can, we can talk to me, but this Cal, the chairman, I have, having another conversation.
Do a follow-up.
Sure. After the holidays. Uh, Kase Drive Monument License Agreement, it's ready to be signed, if, uh, we just need to present it to whomever, Caca Homes for one track, and I guess that's the question.
Who's the second? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, once we see how they close this, so the question is, uh, I can just then send it to McMeese and say, please sign the one, the word. Track.
Right, yeah, at least get that.
And, uh, let us know the party, if the title on you.
He didn't seem to care about li, the license, I don't know what I mean, he did.
Yeah, he seemed pretty open.
Right.
Yeah, but again, he doesn't know that.
No, no, but I mean, his.
Oh, yeah.
Like.
No, not Lot A, but.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
It's, it's a pair.
You're right, the other one could be asphalt next year.
Exactly.
We will find out, I guess, shortly enough.
Yes, we will.
When the big seven comes.
And there's a big, big, uh, sign going up. And not discouraging approaching agreement, one ninety-nine Kase Drive, across the square, had communications with Dave, Dave indicated that the property owner provides official information or they've got some conversations with them before we get into it. But on that note, as I mentioned, I sent David what, I have a sort of a form agreement that I've used in other CDDs that basically, it's a two-page document, single statement, so much fun to read. And, and it said it's basically that we, the district, recognize you, property owner, want to do the following in our reason. We will let you put that in there and have a sketch description so everybody knows clearly what's authorized. We can put it in there and if we, the district, ever need to have it moved or removed for maintenance, reconstruction or repair, you, the property owner, will remove it, we tell you. And if you don't, we will remove it. No liability, you hold us harmless, and then at your expense, we can provide it for it. So, that's basically what it said, it's, but we don't have all the data yet, that correctly.
Right, we don't have all the data yet, plus, uh, Cal sent me earlier this week, I think, some, uh, from, from the dock company, uh, some, uh.
Right.
Places where they went up with some walkways across the swales and so forth for their docks. I haven't looked at those yet, just been too crazy.
Basically, we all.
That's the public hearing that, uh.
Yeah, but we all have walkways over swales.
Right, but these new ones that we're getting, we're, we're, what the intent is, is to go ahead and get this license agreement per se.
I think it's, yeah, it's easier, but again, the county also has become much more attentive to improvements, easements. It all started about a year and a half ago, I can mention it, uh, with generators, the, uh, above-ground generators, actually, we was buying them for the homes and generators after her. And started in two thousand and three where someone was doing it along the county, they said, what's that generator, we've seen two houses, this is in the district range.
Oh, my God.
Come to find out that the county had an issuing purpose for a lot of these, they're not small.
Oh, they're big.
Yeah, and playing, not paying it, the county not paying attention to where they were relatively easy. So, the county, as to the generator, from the adopted new generator, probably required letters of consent from all easements. And they've also carried it over to any construction, uh, that, to be an easement, has shown on a survey. We had a problem in Pollock and Marsh, people had built fences way down into the lakes.
Yeah.
And the district didn't know about it until the maintenance guys driving around on the lake maintenance season one day. Comes to a stop, and the county hadn't been paying attention, so that's, we, we have that form and the idea is to make it as easy as possible, you know, just plug in information. But that's not ready yet.
Right, that's not ready yet, and again, we'll have some other ones coming up in the.
For example, if we get down to thirteen B, we can have that discussion because that would come into play. That would be the form of agreement that would be used, but I don't want to get into the number. Correctly, yeah, correct. On the rules change update, uh, Cal and I've had some emails back and forth and conversations with Chris and Dave. What we'd like to do is in January, we had the one session and y'all looked at it and made some suggestive comments, uh, with the holidays and the shortened schedules, I've not yet had a chance to incorporate those into that red line document. So, in January, we're preventing, we're going to advertise, we would request authorization, advertise the actual rule adoption hearing for March. January, we, you would, you would have a revised red line version.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then you can look at it again in February.
Yeah.
So that, and the public has a full opportunity to look at it all and examine it, so that in March, we have that hearing.
Yeah.
It, it also ties in with the way the utility rates, fees and charges will be taken out of the rule and, as they're rescheduled, they can be adopted by a shorter, easier hearing process.
Yeah.
And, and then also we talked about adding some additional fees and increasing some additional fees.
Yeah.
And there's a hidden statute tucked away that says when you change rates, fees or charge for utility, for utility services, you have to, in addition to any other notice, include a notice of those rate changes, rates, fees or charges changes in the utility billing. The next utility billing goes out twenty-fourth of February, ready, of Jan, of February of December. So, again, we would have a March hearing on revised rates for, you know, meter testing and all those.
And for the, uh, January, February bill that goes out at the end of February.
It would be the notice that we tucked into that.
Yeah. So. So, everything will be done by the first, end of the first quarter.
That's the idea, yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Definitely we have everything in place for.
That works.
When you get into your budget, you're in the neck of the city, Russell and Paul, they're all the same kind of time.
Yeah, that works. So, if we, we could get a motion to change the public hearing from January to March.
We just did that last month.
Yeah, I know.
Is this O and M going to be in your rules and stuff?
That would be a standalone, that'll be, we're talking about that, that'll be, well, that'd be a separate methodology on report and adoption. And the idea is also have all that adopted by March, in time for your budget, because it should go forward, it's not going to go back.
Is that a separate hearing?
If you separate hearing, it would be the same day.
Okay, and a different day than the regular meeting?
No, it'll be the same time.
Oh, okay, so this is at the same time?
Yeah, the same day.
Yeah, so that works, I'll make a motion.
So, it'll be multiple public hearings on one day.
What he said.
I'll second.
When's the March date, Cal?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't have it with me, especially, it's the third, uh, Friday.
Friday.
Okay, we did, uh, the department, and that'll be at eight AM, nine thirty.
It's going to be the eighteenth.
Thank you, and then, Chris and I were working on the edge for, uh, that.
Yeah.
Adoption hearing, then we get into the issue about the ERC methodology update, uh, I'm only going to address one piece of it. We're going to ask that, again, the same process, Russell, you have this update now, January, you look at it.
Yeah, and that works pretty well.
And then March, you have the final adoption hearing, and you have two resolutions you have.
Yeah, now that works, that, that takes the pressure off of it, there's a lot to it, only want to do it once, makes.
I'm a view, I'm a bunch of things.
Makes sense. And I, I hope everyone understands this process, so you're going to adopt an assessment methodology. We're going to apply that and Russell provided for us for every parcel what they're going to get. And then we're just going to put it on in, uh, on the tax bill in October. And this is after, oh, Russell gives us what he thinks.
Russell will give us the report.
The optimum, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, we'll prove it or disapprove.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, change it, whatever.
Assuming the board approves it, then the board will adopt a resolution saying, set the public hearing.
Yeah.
On the adoption of it, put that in the paper, then have another resolution. We did that at Gateway when they changed our assessment methodology. And also, I'd like to make sure every note, mail a copy of that notice also to the property.
Yeah.
So, it's in the paper and it's mailed, uh, so we always have people saying, I didn't get it, didn't know about it, this way we say, hey, we gave extensive notice as to what's going on, you know.
Yeah.
That's just the assessment methodology, when the rulemaking is different, that's just going to the paper, but you'll have extensive discussions here.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. There's no transfer or changes.
No.
That you guys have to make on individual properties. That's what.
For the O and M piece.
For the O and M piece. That the O and M identifies each of the parcels that's on the tax roll, how many O and M they need, regardless of what's on there. That is that share of the, uh, operating cost of the O and M.
The O and M is going to be regardless of what's on there?
Yeah. I mean, if it's vacant, you still got, uh, potential.
Well, that's what I'm not worried about it being vacant, I'm worried about once it's built, you know, I, I just thought it would go up, based on traffic and stuff like that, you were talking about that the other day.
No, not O and M.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not for O and M.
Well, was here, we, I, I would not want to forecast what, Russell's.
Yeah.
All right, I, I think.
Yeah.
I think the critique, the review, and a good question to be asked to Russell, why did you do this, why did you do that, what's the basis?
So we're going to have a modern, up-to-date formula for O and, O and M moving forward that we either accept or we don't.
Yes.
Right.
Now, I just have one curveball question. What about, we're talking that, we're talking that far, what about, um, the new hotel piece? Um, is, they've got six acres of open land that they're going to want to develop, is it gonna, are they going to have questions, or is it going to impact that, or are we just going to blanket it?
Well, Russell, you'll see, Russell, his analysis will have partial analysis.
Oh, and it'll be, it'll be isolated, okay.
That every, every, every parcel will have his own.
Right, so that's.
Maybe the appropriate assessment approach.
That's right.
Could be, I mean, the one he, I, only because this was more recent, the one he did at Gateway was over, I think, eight thousand parcels, six thousand parcels?
Is.
Oh, the, uh, the, the attachment was about that thing. So I mean, so, yeah, so he, he, he went to the property manager's website, looked at the areas for pervious versus pervious.
Yeah, now that's, that's smooth, that'll work, that'll work well. And everyone pays the same, uh, or. We did, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Cal.
You have a motion and a second, I'll change it.
All right.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Ma'am, you were standing up, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, she's Sunset, uh, she's, uh, Case Drive.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Karen Reed, AKA 199 Case Drive. Um, we sent the information, we sent an email back regarding a proposal that you had sent us, and it has been rejected. We have a different agreement, but, um, for the fifteen additional feet you wanted. Um, where we have about twenty feet of our property in the water.
We didn't send anything out. I, I did, I did. I, I sent a sketch what we were proposing, the smart additional.
And we saw what you were proposing, and we came out and said we are rejecting it. Um, we're not willing to give up fifteen more feet.
Did you send a copy of what you said? I don't.
So.
Okay.
There, there, maybe my husband, Tim, they've had some discussions, we'll have some talks about it, but, uh, as of right now, not giving up any.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
I'm just saying, we, we rejected, not giving up fifteen additional feet, unless you're willing to give us fifteen.
Yeah, this is another one of those situations where, because the way things were plotted, most of that drainage is been sitting out in the canal.
It's in the canal.
Uh, yeah, so, what we tried to do was create a win-win situation with, uh, with, with granting, uh, a license to go ahead and have a ground put across for their dock. And at the same time, try to obtain some space that we can actually put the swell up. So we, we needed, what we, we agreed to do is sometime between the holidays, try to get together, take a look at it, see if we can come up with something, something that's mutually satisfying, stop both needs.
And we have put in the drainage, so that if there's a heavy rain and everything else, the water will not sit, well, we have done four point seven, four point nine feet, so that the water will sit, as it was supposed to, and move. But again, there is the problem with problems that have been in here, some are higher, some are lower, and they have not been maintained throughout the year, years, so.
You also had an issue, there was a blowout or two, between you and your neighbor.
Ours was from, there's metal in there, it came from their roof. Yeah, they didn't have, there was no pressure in the water when they were developing, and it came off the roof, and there were no cutters, and we had, and it was the summer, we had heavy rains.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the drainage swells.
Yeah, and they did the swell as well.
Yeah, they, they, they did their swell work.
And then we found the, um, so then, they put the pipe on the one side, so it's being collected on both sides as well, and going through, or what.
Yeah, that's the one that's a little bit unique there, uh, it's right in the corner of Sunset, and that's where they put a, a culvert pipe from the roadway all the way back to the back park. Then there's a structure back there with an interconnecting, over between them, and that's the ones we're needing to get fresh easements on to.
My understanding was that whoever we hired for land paving was to maintain the swells, and maintain that the swells, the swell area was kept clear. And that seems not to be a thing, I mean, up the swell, you know, up all around, so to me, it's, it's, just that hasn't consistently been maintained for.
Slips.
It's only a bonus.
So I was thinking, I was thinking, maybe, everybody needs to walk the whole thing and.
So you asked for another fifteen feet back there, that would be almost to the pool.
Yes.
Yes, and that's what we tried to do, was keep away from the pool, that's why we didn't ask, you know, normally, the, normally, the drainage easement's twenty foot back there, and twenty foot was not going to work with their site plan, so.
So it was a drop off.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we need to get out there, reevaluate, now that I've done some swell work, maybe we only need ten feet back there to at least accomplish what needs to be the basic need for that. They, they tend to be on, I want to call it the high end, even though everything's supposed to be level, but, you know, they're the first way from the discharges.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but then, wow. I don't, I don't, but I mean, he said something about the swell can be removed at any time for, you know.
Remains, not for sidewalks, like the ramps, sidewalks, for retirement, the district needs to go and maintain the swell and reconstruct the swell.
Yeah, we've had a lot of places where people want the walkways from their property, or, or in their property over the swales to reach the boat docks. And, you know, basically, there's a lot of them that exist, there's a lot more that we're reviewing right now to make sure that the water can't get underneath that, the least impediment. Okay, but we wouldn't have them build something, and then that, and that time we're going to fix it, tape down, or?
Well, no, they don't, no.
If we have to maintain the swell and re-dig it out, then we would need to add that. But I mean, if we're designing it right now, we wouldn't, I don't. Well, over a long time, like we talked about earlier, those swales naturally fill in. Ten, fifteen years from now, or, you know, more immediately, if we, if we need to get in there or do some swell work in the next few years, then that would need to be removed. And then in the future, as we move out twenty years, again, those swales are going to be maintained again, and it's just to make sure we got provisions. That I have to remove that temporarily, so we can do the swell work, and then they could put it back in.
And one other aspect, the district, the docks and ramps are built over the swell area, and one of the conditions, although it was recommended by the district engineer, we have to be home on, uh, Terry call, was to have an AH PVC pipe run parallel to the swell. So that, if you can give Terry, you can see all those.
Sure, sure, and, and what we've been trying to do is, uh, try to keep the swell open by using, uh, recommending to them, they use a timber type crossover, that that whole swell area can make, make a bridge, so the whole area can be maintained open. Uh, 199 is a little bit different, I think we talked about it, that, uh, that they're, they're going to be needing to use that with motorized wheelchairs, ballparks, because of some disability issues. And that would be the exception, where we would allow the, the pulp underneath that firm area.
So, I've heard it twice now, and is it, or is it not up to the landscaping to keep these swales clean?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It is not.
They're supposed to be clean, yeah, free of any impediments by the landowner.
He works on some, but at the request of the owner.
Okay.
So it's separate.
But it's separate somehow.
Yeah, mine just gets mowed.
Okay.
But any, we as homeowners cannot put anything in the swell.
Right.
I've seen some people store things.
Yeah.
Like a little canoe, it's not, they're not supposed to do that.
I think there's been cases where somebody's planted a tree back at one, too.
Well, the only other item I have is when we get down to the, um, issue, in fact, it's next, parcel thirteen, Land Quest listing. Have any other questions? Oh, I, and, and with the help of Mr. Jensen and Cal, I'll make sure I capture the, sent to the board at the last meeting, I relined the agreement, and I got it out, uh, later than I'd wanted to, uh, but it went out, and if Adam, Land Quest, that you look at, get back. So, and incorporate, and if any members of the board want to see if it was extensionally redlined, I can send it out.
It was adjusted.
It was, it was moderately adjusted.
Do you have any idea, I mean, to me, it seems like it's, um, it's their form, we doctored it to fit our needs.
Revised.
Yeah, revised it, but it shouldn't take that long to get an answer from them, I mean, we're burning daylight with this thing.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything.
You know.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
The holidays, we were there.
So let me ask you a question, let's say signs, can we tell them you had rocking on it before the next meeting? You've already had a.
Yeah, we've already agreed on it.
Yeah, I don't want to wait thirty days.
What I would suggest is that the board, I think, I think today they can say that, approve the, I think there's Benson telling me that, see, I apologize, uh, approve the forms, substantially final forms, so that the chair could sign it even if they're a minor change.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you, but I don't want to wait thirty days, we need to.
Well, it's nice of you to say that, you don't want to see it.
That's it, we can hit it right there. But, but what happens if they don't accept the changes? We start over. And with new people, I'll find somebody, this is ridiculous.
We've lost, what, three months?
Yeah, I'll find somebody, I'll find a broker in, within six hours, so.
Why wouldn't we default to?
That seems to be a board decision. That's fine.
Why wouldn't we just default to the second choice, whatever that was?
I think the board can do that, like our.
What's the, the similar.
I think if the board were to say, if Land Quest doesn't sign the revive, that the staff and the chair authorized to discuss and negotiate with the second.
Lot.
Choice, and with a similar type of terms for the commission.
I think we have a right, I believe we all believe in such.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is, there's no official second choice.
No.
No, not a question.
That's what I'm saying, I, I think you need to say who you want to negotiate with, rather than the second choice.
Maybe another alternative would be, uh, a lot of people are calling, we check out the holidays, I've noticed that, some are affected, my area hasn't, they hasn't, but if we cannot get an affirmative response by the end of next week. The board could call the earlier meeting, just on this topic alone, so we can actually call special meeting.
Well, like, the, and the next week is Christmas.
Right, no, but.
So it's still part of the hollow.
If, if he doesn't agree, we lose a month, I'm not going to, we don't need another, I, I don't think, you want another meeting just to decide that, or you want to decide right now?
I say decide right now.
With the second.
With the second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think on the vote, the second would have been, what, Mike Carr?
Yes, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm complaining with, you.
Oh, well, 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 there.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be John, uh, Mike Carr.
Mike Carr.
Okay.
Do we need a motion then?
I would suggest that.
Sure.
Yeah, and the motion would be that by, it's like the January third, it's after the.
By January third.
We, we did get a response from, you know, Andy, I think.
He, he says he's ready to get back.
Yeah, and, but that was just, he just got the additions.
I know, that's what I said, and, so that if the, if you don't have a agreement by January third, okay, staff, I'll try, chair to, uh, present a similar document to Mike Carr.
I second. Yeah, well, I'd be that.
He can't make that motion.
I'll get that.
The, uh, what if the changes that they have a problem with are minor? And they really don't, they won't be impacted.
There's two ways to do it, as I mentioned before, if the Land Quest comes back, changes that are open mind, because the board says approve this substantially final form, the chair and the manager and council have the ability to approve.
I like that better, um, I'm really uncomfortable to say Mike Carr, I, from everyone I talked to, I was not at the meeting for the presentations, but people that I talked to really liked Land Quest's presentation, they, they were outstanding.
But we're not, we're not saying no to them.
Just if there's minor.
No, if they're minor changes, I, I think that I would rather consider their minor changes before I would go to anything else.
Minor.
Right, minor changes, correct, that the chair will go and sign the compensation with it, but if there are substantial changes in the mine, the chair, the manager, and council, then you can always secure a contract with Mike Carr.
The only thing he's not going to like, oh, it's his contract, the only thing he's not going to like that we changed, really, is we expect performance. We want, we can get two, two and a half million on our own, and have four times without him, without anybody, so we're expecting more money than that.
Yeah, because a lot of the other terms were not applicable.
Right, that's right.
Like the property exchange option.
So he's not going to care about that.
Foreclosure, property, affecting the property, it's bigger, more so, I think, that the compensation, it's contingent upon imposing, at a certain sales.
Yeah, so, I expect him to get back with me this week.
Yeah.
Probably today.
Yeah.
Uh, what we'll do is Tony and Terry and I will review it, and if it's minor changes.
Yeah.
I'll send it out to everyone, and just say, these are the changes that they're suggesting to what we sent them. If anyone has a problem with this, let us know, and then it'll have to go on the January. Just let me know. And then, uh, we'll, we'll schedule another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's okay, okay.
Let's do it, that one.
Thank you. And that way, we could keep moving to second, at that meeting if we need to.
Yeah, right, yeah, so I, uh, do you want that follow-up if, uh, a motion, if we're going to offer, because we don't have authority to go to the second bidder now?
I mean, I think that was part of, it was a two-part, okay, I'm sorry. I guess a two-part motion, one would be to authorize the chair to sign it, we've agreed with Land Quest substantially final form, if presented to them with, in substantial changes in, in the mines, decision of the chair, manager, and council.
Yes.
And if the changes are substantial, the Land Quest contract, and request that the staff who authorized prepare a backup contract, called with Mike Carr.
With Mike Carr, yes.
Got it.
That's the motion, did you hear me?
Okay, so, we say, so moved.
So moved.
Chair, move, who's seconded?
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor? Any nays?
I'm, I'm a nay, I don't, I don't, I don't want to go to him, I, I just, I just wasn't there for the presentation, so that's why I'm a nay.
Okay, four, one, motion passes, uh, with, uh, Vice Chair Holloway voting no.
Uh, item twelve, be like in void, uh, I haven't yet sent an email out, Cal and I, because, again, I just lost track of my days, I'll send an email out to Commissioner LaCastro, and we'll go to finalize days to get with him. Plus, he was out all last week, his daughter's graduating from college, so, uh, it'll probably be the first or second week in January, and the county commission has a very full January meeting scheduled, but he's always good. Especially when it's folks that are in his district, I mean, he's, he's responsible, everything's very good, but particularly responsive to y'all.
Yeah, he loves us.
Yeah.
Thank God.
Somebody loves us.
Yeah. And you're on a roll, keep going. Well, the ERC methodology, you have the report he has there, uh, he said he'll have it to you with time to review for the January meeting. He'll be there to answer questions, uh, and then if there's any changes, they'd be presented at a February meeting with a public hearing on, uh, March, okay?
Yes.
And again, the focus is, it's a go-forward document.
Yeah.
And that would be utilized or accepted for setting the budget in the public hearings, uh, for the upcoming twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, and.
Next, we've got time, Cal.
Yeah, I, it, it's just so that, we're clear, when, Russ, when you asked the question about, you know, changes of from vacant to a developed parcel, that would have to be analyzed. You know, if it's like a hotel, now all of a sudden, you've got so many ERCs that are, they're utility-based, but still, we have to come up with something where, that they would be increased. If vacant land won't be the same as developed land.
Yeah, a lot of times, you have, I think we may have mentioned, sometimes you may assign, like, a vacant commercial piece just to say five units, five O and M units. But then it gets developed at an intensity that actually results in use of more district services, so the real, the number of, you know, allocated. number of, you know, allocated units could be eight or nine or ten, depending on.
I'm sure. Well. That's what he's gonna have spelled out.
That should be in the report.
Yeah.
That would be in the report. That's right.
You have a request that's in your packet, and I believe he's here now. But they, a request to put a safety fence for the pool in a new house, one forty-three Venus Gate. And I believe the architect is here. This is him back here.
And I apologize, it's one forty-eight.
Yes, one forty-eight. Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah. I told you, you didn't have to be here, Bill Tinner.
Well, Cal thought he was in Chicago, so that's why I didn't tell you.
So, thanks for having me. I am an architect with H Level. We're, we're based in Naples and then worked in the area before, so we currently, I'm here with Matt Bailey. Kind of Bellomia.
Bellomia.
The contractor. And the project is currently under construction. They're getting ready to pour the slab. So the good news is we have plenty of time to kind of hash this out and hopefully come up with some sort of a agreement with you guys. But long story short, we designed the house in a way in which, you know, we're trying to take advantage of as much of the property as possible, locating the pool all the way back to where the drainage easement is located. And then basically the remainder of the, the rear property, we can't really do anything with because it's a twenty-five foot drainage easement around the entire rear of the property. And so we, we have a permit from the county, which we were showing the pool safety fence, although I've realized in hearing from me today, there's a lot of concerns with, with water. So we're proposing to ideally keep the pool safety fence obviously out of the side easements to allow water to flow freely and convey from the street out to the water for our storm drainage plan that was submitted to the county. But we would like to just put the pool safety fence along the sides of the house, kind of per this little drawing here. So i- it would be encroaching theoretically into the rear twenty-five foot drainage easement. But we are open and creative and would love to work with you guys to find out a solution to be able to locate this pool safety fence.
Yeah.
There's three copies.
Oh, it's in your book.
I think they're in the.
The larger one is smaller. Page forty-three.
And, you know, so the idea is that we're willing to make the, the pool safety fence, you know, removable, should in case you guys need to get in there and improve the swell, the drainage. We're happy to do any type of maybe underground drainage that might hopefully curtail any issues. Obviously, the owner will put together like a maintenance agreement to ensure that the pool safety fence is free and clear of debris, you know, on a weekly basis or whatever you guys deem appropriate for the landscaping agreement. And then we can put together, however you guys deem, deem fit to, to do some sort of a legal document that this agreement would, you know, stay with the property moving forward, should they determine to sell it. They are planning to be here for a long time, super cool people. They plan to be here for a long time, so I don't see that being an issue in the near future, but I understand you need to protect, you know, things, things can change. So I guess we're just here today to start the dialogue with you and hopefully work together to come up with a creative solution that will inhibit the conveyance of water, but allow us to have the pool safety fence in the rear of the property to not muck up and block this beautiful view that they have.
The, um, so the pool, no cage, right?
Yeah, no cage.
No cage, no cage, that's what you need to say.
Do you live in Florida?
Absolutely.
That's why you have to.
Have you ever lived out here?
I have. Well, we, we worked on a couple houses down here, and we've, we've designed well over a hundred houses here in Southwest Florida, and, you know, we are more of a contemporary architect and the majority of, of clients, you know, they, we'll do recess screen and shutters over the, the covered area. For the majority of the time when you're in the pool, you know, it's during the day, the insects aren't always as bad during the day.
They are here.
So the county says that suffices to, as a protection, really?
Yes. I feel, yeah, all you need is a pool safety fence. We do this all the time in, you know, the water in Naples, for Royal, Royal Harbor, Island Shores, everywhere. So we're just hoping that, and moving forward, we, we have the opportunity to potentially work on some other projects here in the future in which the clients are like-minded. They don't necessarily want to have a screen enclosure. They want to have this wide open, nice business, you know, to, to the water and not have it obscured from aesthetic perspective. So we're hopeful that there's some way we can come up with a, a team approach or a plan.
Is, would you have a gate there that you could open that up?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep. So that you can let the water just.
Flow through. So the thing that gets her a little bit is that you have what you both want to do for the spa, which we agree with, we deal with lots, and you have a requirement for the pool.
Right.
For instance, that's where this one makes it a little cheek, I guess, as you said. And listening to your earlier discussions about wanting to do like a letter of agreements, we do a lot in the city of Naples. We'd be happy to participate in that with you folks and do your key thinking plan because this is something where Brent said the clients are very next people. They plan on living here a long time. A letter of agreement where it would simply state that we would maintain that fence or have it removable in the case that you need to do anything for the apartments.
Is there? The obvious question.
Yes.
Is there any reason why you can't just put a fence around the pool? Like where it is?
It's, it's mainly aesthetic trends. These are very expensive, beautiful properties. You don't want to necessarily muck up you with, with the fence.
I'm not, we're open to anything.
But yeah, theoretically, we could.
But let me just say this. I'm not being a wise. You saw what we've been going through today.
Right.
And we inherited this mess.
Right.
It's not us. We're not the backup.
Right.
If you put a fence around the pool, we never hear about it again. If you put a fence along the property line on both sides that can collect sticks and stones and leaves and bushes and all that other stuff, we're gonna hear from it again. And the other thing is, there are gonna be others who are gonna want to do this, because the first thing that looks like to me is a real nice place for my little dogs to run around, and that's fine. Except it's not fine for us. And the people that have come forward to us today have extremely legitimate problems. And those extremely legitimate problems have been going on for years, and what has brought them to the forefront is the new construction, because FEMA is telling builders like you, this is up eight point nine feet. So the water flows downhill. So now the older homes, nobody thought that was ever gonna happen. But now it's happened. And now it's a whole new can of worms for us. So I'd be, I think I'd be leaning towards putting a really pretty fence around the pool.
Right, but the thing with, with our clients, like Brent said, is that people pay, that's, that's money for, for houses, but on that particular thing, it's, it's at the end of a call set, so it has a wraparound. You're right, we can put the fence up there, but we put a fence up there, it's a visual deterrent for what they bought the property for, to see the water and everything else.
To get this light.
But you also have, I as a neighbor, don't want your fence obstructing my view of the waterway.
That's the thing.
And, and the other thing is, and I don't live down there, but the other thing is, we have to be sensitive to everybody. Nobody made them buy it. I'm saying this a lot lately. Nobody made them buy the parcel. And you guys told them which way the house was gonna face, and I knew my wife and I have done this. We sit there in camp chairs and look at the view and say, wow, this is great, and that's what it's gonna look like.
Right.
So if they, I don't know them, if they can't visualize a pool fence, then they need to move it around a little ways so they still get the nice view.
It's on a call set, so.
Yeah.
And this, I, I mean, I think there's not every property has a twenty-five foot for your drainage easement.
No, I agree.
So most of them do not, and you are allowed to put a, a, a pool safety fence along the, the side of the property.
Right.
And we've done that in the past.
Except we just have one that it couldn't happen because there was a swell between the two houses.
Yeah. Yeah, but not doing anything between the house. This, this would be inset ten feet in, in, in the property lines, so not on the, not on the, not on the side property lines at all. We've actually tried to minimize the pool fence. Where Brent's clients work directly off the back of the house to minimize the, so like what Terry was saying, to minimize if going to the property lines or farther where it obstructs adjacent homeowners' views.
Yeah, how tall is the fence?
That's four feet.
That's it?
Yeah.
Four feet?
It's four feet and it's.
That's like, that's like gonna block any.
It's, it's a vertical picket fence, basically three and seven eighths inches between to be pool safety dip, so kids can't, you know, somehow weasel their way through or get stuck in there. So the idea is that, you know, it's not a solid fence. Water should be able to convey more, you know, with the, with you guys, or we can have. Those sections, the sections that I think Dave was asking about that actually go down in the swell property, Brent and I are very happy to design those sections and for their removal. They're taken right out. That would help in, like you're returning to saying earlier, we've done different letters of agreement, LOA agreements, all the different municipalities for, for things like this in the past. I feel for you because I've heard the whole conversation this morning about all the docks, the crossovers, and there was mention of somebody that has a disability that's trying to get access. There's all those concerns and constraints, and it's just, I understand what you're trying to do, but I also think there's a way to make it work both for what you folks are trying to do for water flowage and at the same time still make it work aesthetically, still protect neighbors' new rights to go through so they're not having to look through fences as well. We're just trying to find some common ground. Or open knocking.
How high is the pool deck in relation to the fence? It's gotta be.
Eight, nine, right?
The, the, the pool itself is gonna be up at seven, seven foot six.
Six, so. The house next door, Daryl and I would be seven foot six.
Exactly.
Would be the same, so you, they would be seeing over a four-foot fence is not gonna block anybody's.
Yeah, because the, exactly, so that obviously the grade is, is below that. The idea is the pool safety does prevent people from going inside.
Right. So that's, I don't, that's not gonna be a problem, but yours is gonna be like the house we were talking about, because you're at the end of the run.
Right.
You got that.
That's my point.
You're gonna have all the water.
And what happens with that, Dave?
Well, but that, yeah, you, you're talking about a removable fence, or as long as it gets it would open.
So we would, yeah, we could do that, or you could put a gate, that's another option. Consider move such and just put gates that open, and there's some kind of agreement that during a tropical storm or hurricane, those gates have to be open. And then it's just open, it just open.
Yeah, but then you're not, then you're not meeting the safety.
Well, but here's like current emergency, which if there's something like that going on, that's how it is. And, and we can also provide a pool safety net, which basically would, you know, for a building, could even have a pool safety net, so they could temporarily put that in place to reduce their liability should somebody come in.
You're on a.
It's all, you have to, you have to cover your bases.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
It's like security, just the house. So, yeah, like I said, we have, we have plenty of time. It's just getting started. I have this question too, just back here. I, I sit on a lot of these different boards and I hear it, just so you don't feel special. These different communities have the same things.
We know.
We do stuff in Meditera, the Grario, and everything else. Does, where the Isles have some type of a pre-storm checklist that they go through where the swells and the inlets and the culverts are all checked so many days before?
No.
Well, and the reason I said, I say it nicely, so please take.
No, 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 no. But they're checked monthly. They're checked monthly. We check them monthly.
But if you have something like that in place and in all the boards, put it in place, it really helped a lot of stuff, like this, before a named storm or stuff. There was like a certain little, a lot of better words, checklist that was one through where, that any gates that had to be removed or done, any culverts that need to be repaired or make sure that there are any inlets repaired, and it was stuff that made it seem to make things a lot better.
Yeah, but, you know, it's just, my quick thought is that gates are removed. Why do I want that responsibility?
Right.
I would rather not have.
And who's gonna do it? That's. What are you gonna do?
The owner of the service will be responsible.
Please, I'm, I'm, we want to be friends with everybody, but what if they don't? And the problem, I'm gonna be honest.
Are they seasonal?
Yeah.
Or, or they're gone.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you. If he tells us, if the engineering company says it's not gonna negatively impact the water flow in a heavy storm, or things like which are very real things that happen here a lot. A lot. This is the Florida Everglades. But today, we were subjected to a few little failed threats. I don't take kindly to that at all, and I bite back. I don't like that. We want to be friends with our neighbors, and we want everything, you can ask the people in Stellamaris North. We want to make sure that things are made right for them. I don't like threats. And so I'm trying to avoid that with you. We want these people to have their beautiful home and their beautiful view. If the engineering, as far as I'm concerned, if the engineering says it's gonna be fine, their, our house isn't gonna flood, it's not gonna dam up anywhere, then a big deal. I don't care. And if the neighbors, I'd like to hear what the neighbors think, I would, but if they don't care, no problem. But if they're in, if they're in the low ground and there's any possibility that this thing that these people are experiencing could happen all over again, especially where the house has been elevated eight or nine feet because of FEMA, I don't want to subject us to that exposure.
Put a culvert underneath that. I mean, I'm sorry, you guys, you guys have been talking about some types of culverts or someone underneath these docks that are going over these swells. Could the same type of a, a situation be done for that, that fence section?
Typically, we, we prefer to have a bridging type system put over the swell.
Yes.
We do need to have access to the docks. The, the exception we're talking about is because of disability at one ninety-nine K.
Right.
Drive. Otherwise, it's typically the bridge type structure. You, there's, except for the fact that that's maintenance to the district, it is, you could do some kind of bubble up structure back there, but again, that could be an issue. Is, is there a possibility, and I was just trying to find if I had a grading plan for your site, of running that safety fence parallel with the drainage easement?
To run it parallel on the back, on the back. How to answer that, Brent? Parallel.
To the drainage.
Or you can just run it at the drainage easement line.
In, in the rear.
In the rear.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, we certainly could. Of course, we could. Yes, property is a little unique though because everybody has their special circumstances. But we have a drainage easement that runs down the side yard. And we have another drainage easement that runs behind the property.
Right.
So we have already discussed with the homeowner to eliminate the fence on the side yard, so that's totally unobstructed. So now we're basically down to basically two points where we have crossover on the back, where we understand we want water flow, but we're like, you know, the board seems to be good about trying to work in, work out things for just like, what consideration can we make? Yeah, and some sort of underground drainage, you know, in, in that swell to help potentially circumvent. Stuff like. You have lots of abilities and stuff. Where you're trying to help accommodate that situation as well, so.
So what he's saying is, and I agree, I hear that, is there something, I think, is there something they can do that we would agree with that will work? We don't want to revisit it, but they're asking for a solution, which we're the only ones that can give them that solution. Is there a solution?
Here's my only problem I have with this.
Right.
And that is that it'll be the only fenced-in property.
Right.
In Port of the Isles. And the problem is, once people, we know how people are, ask forgiveness, not permission.
Right.
And once they see that this property has a fence around it.
Right.
Whether they have animals, alpacas or whatever, I don't care.
Right.
They're gonna say, well, why can't I put in a fence and I'll go across the, the easement?
Yeah, then I think they would have to come in and do whatever detail we figured out. So maybe they have to come and get approval. So, yeah, I mean, I understand, and really what's driving this behind the scenes is where Chris people come from. You've got a pool, so there's no way not to have a pool without having that pool secured somewhere so that it doesn't have accessibility. So, so the fence thing I agree with. I'd love to see it, even when you put the, the fence back to the water. Somebody wants to come in, the pool board allows it, but somebody wants to come in a kayak or boat, trespass, or come over, they can get it in the pool, so. It's one of those things. Maybe it wasn't allowed, but we did, we worked on a policy, which we got the exact same situation where, where we do have a pool fence along the side of the property.
Let me say the word, calling words, a lexan fence. You can look right by. You mean, have a quote up?
Yes.
Well, I say, that would be, option B is to come up with a, the, the more clear, visible pool fence along the drainage easement. So, so that would be our backup plan, but we're here just hoping we can work with you.
Well, the other thing, what if they're gonna do, what if it comes time for the.
As far as.
Well, if you, you put a boat in there with a dock, you've still gotta go over the swell. And then what are these people gonna do? Walk across the grass to get to it?
They're all over planning on putting in one of those.
But then we would, we would, we would design, uh, uh, an access bridge like we're talking about potentially to, to access the, the dock.
Yeah, but like from the house to the.
Yep.
Over the fence.
No, they wouldn't.
The fence wouldn't be.
They, they, they could basically walk or it's somewhat flatter, not the deep salt with the, the swell. And then with the swell, there'd be some kind of.
I don't think you guys had this one in your book. I read that. There's more of a visual site. This is the mother house. Here's the water area. This is what they want to do. We have that. It's just.
Yeah.
Are you, is it in the book?
Me personally, I like Plan B.
Yeah, I do too.
I, 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 I just don't like the idea of being the first fenced in property in the port. And that would, what it would be fenced in property.
Well, we worked on another property that show you a photo that is, it does have the fence in the back. Exactly. Yeah.
Boy.
And there's other, yep, there's other properties in the port that have fences going back too. There's.
Let's see that one.
On the side.
Engineer.
This is.
I haven't seen it.
Okay. Oh, great. I'm gonna get my line in trouble here. So we have similar situation. We, we have a pool safety fence and a pool safety fence there as well. But, but there is no rear drainage easement on this property.
That's the problem.
But, but I don't know why, I mean, so you're not allowed to have a full safety fence in the, in Port of the Islands?
No, no, no. You gotta, you gotta, you need safety fence isn't the problem. Drainage is.
And the drainage, exactly.
It's the encroachment of the drainage.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not fencing in the property. There's other properties that are fenced in exactly like what we're talking about.
Now, I'm talking along the case, along the east side of the case.
Newport K. What was the other one? One oh five Newport K.
Did they have approval to do it?
Uh, I mean, we worked with, at SEO, everything is done. So.
Uh, with who?
Well, Clark County, everything is.
Well, they, they don't communicate with us. Right.
And that was the issue. We got everything approved. We thought everything was fine.
Usually they check with us for sewer and water.
But I think he said that one of the properties wasn't free draining.
Right, there's no.
Oh, you were saying there's no other properties that, that are fenced in.
Looking at that amount of fence.
Yeah.
The fence that you put, that looked there was extremely short.
And that, well, the one that we designed there, uh, that you have a copy of, that's the shortest linear footage of fence that we could put in to do that right off the back of the house.
Well, that could be, but how long is it?
All right, can you? Um, I would.
How long are both sides?
I would approximate, so the one on the, well, looking at the sheet on the right side is twenty-five feet plus probably over there. What is that? Maybe ten to twelve feet? So thirty-seven feet. The other side is probably maybe forty-five to fifty feet.
Wow. And how about that other house you just showed me?
Uh, it's probably not that different. I mean, I, I can, I can get to the exact minimum. It's helpful. I, I would say probably forty feet on one side and maybe twenty on the other. So it's not.
Except for the fence issue, uh, uh, the, the biggest difference is the drainage. Right. And, uh, in, in, uh, Newport K, the drainage is meant to come out the front of this, front of the, front of the, to the street versus to the rear lot.
Now, what about, this is an elevated lot compared to older houses.
Yeah, next door to this, isn't there a house that's already in?
Yeah, that's Jean. I read that last week.
Yeah, they've been there as long as I've been here. So that's why I say it's approaching on their view.
So I guess, yeah, I mean, overall, the question is, i- i- is there an engineering way in, in, in which we can get this accomplished? If we can, we're happy to do all the legwork, do the design work, have you guys review it.
A lot of improvement.
So, and if it's absolutely not possible, then, then, you know, you guys have the sale. But we're hopeful there's a common sense solution in which we can get this to be approved.
I guess we've got no jurisdiction if it's outside the drainage easement or at the drainage easement.
Right, right. So anything that's outside of the easement, you're on, you're, you're all right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
But this.
So we're asking to in, in, in approach the drainage easement for this full safety net.
And that's.
That's why we're here. Otherwise, we wouldn't, wouldn't waste your time.
Well, no, you're not wasting our time. Every day's a learning experience. But that's, you, you were here and you saw what we went through earlier. And it's all legitimate.
Absolutely. So that's where.
Get it.
We, we hope there's a way which this full safety fence would not contribute to any issues. We're hopeful. And, you know, we can do calculations. We have a great civil engineer do calculations as well to hopefully.
Unless it's not a solid fence, but I'm sure Brent.
No, we see that.
It's not a solid.
It's just like, just like outside right there. And it's all, there's a guarantee that now, change in fence and drainage swell out there. So it's just not changing. Yeah, not changing.
Right, no, we see it.
And, and we can minimize the actual vertical supports to, to maximize the free flowing distance below the bottom rail and grade.
So back to you. Do you think it's gonna impact the swell?
It would be impacts potentially, uh, especially if, if the fence doesn't get removed and we got a storm event that does.
Yeah, the removal thing's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Let's assume it's fixed with no gates. Worst case.
It fills up with debris and the water is not able to, what water would need to flow to that control structure would not be able to.
Is there, so where, I'm curious, the, the debris, worst debris, where, where is it? Where is it gonna be coming from?
Comes down the whole street.
Comes down the whole street.
Palm trees, you know, where they.
Palm fronds from, uh, from landscaping.
So is there a way to preemptively filter that? You know, at, at our neighbors or at our.
The whole street. It's the whole street. The water won't flow down that.
I think it becomes a little bit of a question for the district whether they want to accept the added maintenance of filtering devices for debris and so on and so on. It's an added cost that sits for one property owner to spread upon everybody.
Well, yeah, we, we wouldn't want to, you know, a- anything we would do would be taken care of on our property by our owners. We're not asking you guys to.
I was out here for, uh, Irma.
Right.
This was, and the debris was five feet high all the way down the line in the streets.
Yeah, that's pretty difficult.
The problem with, unfortunately, the problem with this is, um, you're the, you're the lowest end. You get everything off the street. You get everything off, two thirds of the street is gonna run towards you.
Right.
And if it hits this and there's debris there, and then it backs up or it goes over.
Right.
Backs up to the point and goes over. Yeah, I can't dilly-dally around. I don't see any way for that not to be blocked. Yeah, it's gonna be an issue. I mean, I mean, you get, yeah, cause you get like the glass plates, you get stainless steel.
We could come up with a solution, absolutely.
I, I actually don't think that's gonna flow. So.
And i- if we were to, um, somehow provide full evidence to have your review, is that a possibility?
I- i- it's, it's the event that occurs that causes the clogging of that fence. Even if you looked at a bubble up type under terrain system, again, clogging effect.
Yeah, and I think like.
In the maintenance of the district, you know, it increases maintenance.
Yeah, you haven't seen it. We've seen it. You know, I've been out here twenty years and drainage is a big problem. And anything that impact or, you know, do something to stop that drainage is not gonna help us.
We just had a storm, just a rain in, what was it, the first week in October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, the gentleman that was here earlier, his whole backyard was three feet deep.
And he's at the culvert side.
He's in, he's at the end like you guys.
Exactly like this.
Exactly.
It's a problem.
And the local developers said it almost went into his house. The water came up so quick it didn't drain off. It's a new phenomenon and it's being exacerbated by legality. Because FEMA is making you guys build houses for sea level. And so this is a brand new problem.
They forgot about the houses that were built ten, fifteen years ago to FEMA's regulations.
But you can pay the way it's from.
We know. Unfortunately, it's gonna keep, everything, there, there's new FEMA masks are coming out. Probably more sure this could be an issue on up there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's gonna continuously be a problem. So, um, I'm surprised they don't.
In fact, I believe, uh, this is residential water defense also.
Yeah, here, we put in, we got a proof county one vote, we retract the defense and county approved it. We had so much clearance underneath the fence.
Right.
Well, they didn't, wouldn't accept it as a barrier for the pool.
That's.
And then you guys rejected the fence because it went over the swell.
Destructed the view.
Still in the easement. So ours was rejected.
Well, we worked.
The other way, we ended up having. Cause we want the pool with the view and the other. Now we have to.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a hard change. So it's on record.
Lexan.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't have the cage. I got the same thing. You guys have the, but I got the. You got the tanks. I got the aluminum. I, I know that.
Right, right.
Yeah, but this, I, it's just gonna be a drainage problem really.
Yeah.
Okay, no, we're understood. That's why we're here. So I appreciate your guys' time and I truly understand, uh, that. So.
So you got five feet of debris from, so all.
Five, five feet along the street line and the whole street.
Yeah.
Everywhere, at least five.
So all the, all the little dock things that go over, was that blocked back and stuff up too?
No, no, nothing. Uh, no, I'm just talking about where the debris comes. It was all up the trees.
A lot of docked buildings were underwater.
Is there a way that, you know, it's typically, as architects, we, we have to work in multiple jurisdictions. There's obviously caveats in every jurisdiction, but in a perfect world, is there a way that you guys could, uh, coordinate Clark County better to alleviate, you know, these problems?
Trust the county.
I was gonna say. The way, the way we have been, I've been reacting is when we see ground being broke by a new house, I go to the county website and start pulling all the affirmative. Information I can't, I play detective.
As Sergeant Schultz once said, they tell us nothing.
They tell us nothing.
I, I dug my stem wall and it all dug and ready for the symmetrical and I had to move it to. I'll redo the whole thing. So, just because of that.
You look like an aerial view about here, that little spot with the motif, that's Nairobi. It's called Port of the Islands. You can go to the county offices and they say, where the hell is that? It's scary.
Well, it's beautiful. It is. It's the largest, largest hotel.
And I'd be interested in what kind of flash it would be.
So, so we, uh, yes, we go, so we factor it.
Mine heated up, like.
These are good.
No, they're not in double tanks.
Point two solar, you gain coefficient and to put your hands on the glass, it can't feel hot.
Tony, uh, this was an official request for variance, I guess.
Request.
Right. So does there have to be a motion by the board to either vote it up or down?
Correct. Okay. I'll move that we deny this request.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi. Sorry.
Hi.
All right, all right.
Sorry.
Sorry. Merry Christmas.
Supervisor's request. I have a comment. I'd like to make this being the end of the year. I really would like to thank you, you, you and the guys that run the plant and stuff. Cause I think you do an exceptional job. And I know we don't tell you that ever. And, uh, me more than anybody, I think I, without thinking, text you at five thirty in the morning. I text you at Sunday afternoon when you're in the tub and you always get back to me. And that's unheard of. And all of you do a stellar job. You really do. A- and, uh, I just wanted you to know that because it can't be easy. Never mind writing these bibles once a month. It can't be easy. And, and I know you've taken, uh, in fire and all those things. And so I just want you to know that we, I think I speak for everybody, but I certainly appreciate all you do. And I think everybody else does too.
Yeah. Thank you. Absolutely.
And we're pretty good too, yeah.
Yeah, we are. You guys do a job.
I, I have a request, um, to work on the wording to the new owners. Um, if we're going to send something negative, I mean, I think you always approach a letter with the form of a Oreo cookie.
Michelle, we haven't read the letter. We don't know. And I know myself, if I open something up and I'm having a bad day, I can take it out of content. So until we see the letter, we can't.
Yeah, Michelle, we, we can probably sweeten that up with a little, a little bit of niceties.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that. Yeah. Um, and then I'd also like to just, um, comment that, um, I'd like to agree with Ray that our job is to fix problems in the port. And I think it's really important that we do take ownership of all the storm systems. Like Dave said, the, um, balance should even out with the assets and the cost. Um, but it just seems like all the problems today, we spent so much time talking about it. And if we would get everything fixed like it should be, that we would have the ability to do that instead of keep asking every group to do it themselves, if we took, um, uh, responsibility for the maintenance and, uh, um, and getting it done right in the first place.
Talking about Stellamaris.
Yeah.
The Stellamaris Stormwater System. Yeah.
Take one, we probably should take a look at all. Absolutely. Yeah.
All of them, all of them. Yep. And it's, it's our job. So anyway, that's it. And Merry Christmas.
I'd like, Michelle brought something up and I was reading the other thing and I apologize for that. I'm the one that said that my car would be the second best alternative. I, uh, of who came, I think that's true. Do I think there are better ones? Yes. But if the board feels we go to second, if they don't take, I think they're gonna take it. I think Land Quest will take it. I wasn't really comfortable publicly, I wasn't really comfortable with how my car approached us originally. And I think he's got stuck in his head, two million dollars in RV park. Um, and of course I'll ask him that question. But I just don't have a good feeling about that. Uh, we'll leave it at that and I will ask him some pointed questions if it comes to that. Uh, but I know, I'm, I'm getting the definite feeling that nobody thought the hotel was ever gonna sell and it's gonna sell. Nobody ever thought there were gonna be a hundred fifty-three new hotel rooms or ninety-four more condos or six to eight hundred more people here. Nobody ever thought that, but it's happening. That being the case, this takes on a whole new persona. And a lot of people have said to me at the restaurant, everywhere, we don't want an RV park. We don't want all those people. And it's people who live across the street. And so my point is, uh, I like Land Quest because they came up with some innovative ideas and their name is Land Quest. And I'm hoping they go for what we give them. Okay? If they don't, the reason I said, let me find somebody, wasn't to ride over anybody. It was, let me find somebody else. That's all it was.
All right, but Ray, I believe when the boat came, we had, that's where the first and second came.
It was.
There was some of us that liked Carr's presentation. And if you were gonna find someone, you should have found them then.
I didn't have that choice. They found them. You gave it up to me, I'll find you a hundred. Nobody said, go find somebody. I'd be happy to find somebody.
Yeah, but right now no one's saying, go find somebody.
Nobody did that.
We already decided what we're doing. So that's.
Dave didn't do that. We did that. We contracted probably fifteen realtors and the, the ones that you got were the only ones that were fine. So I, I don't know if the fifteen.
Yeah.
Covers the ones you would have, uh, included. The, I, I think one thing you guys need to be thinking about is you sell parcel thirteen. Uh, that's gonna take a lot of your ERCs.
Yes.
Uh, the hotel's gonna, that, you're, you might not have it. We might be back too. And, you know, and I know that Steve didn't want his ERCs and tried to give them back. But the previous owner was offered forty thousand dollars a, uh, ERC and he turned it down because he thought he could get more money.
Right.
ERCs used to be pretty valuable. Now the other, you know, you might not be able to develop all the property because you don't have a big enough wastewater, water wastewater.
That's exactly right.
It's first come, first.
And they may not be in that ERCs.
And the reason why I think first come, first served, now I heard again that the hotel didn't close because the man is sick with COVID. And that deal might not happen.
No, it's closing. It's closing the twenty-ninth. And the reason it didn't close for the second time, if you see that high lift that's out there, they screwed up the internet in the hotel by re-tiring the roof. They blasted stucco off the cupola. Whoever is doing the work is like, okay. And Sunstream's trying to Mickey Mouse it to get away cheap is what I was told. Sunstream's trying to Mickey Mouse it to get away cheap is what I was told. And that's what it looks like.
But it still doesn't mean it's gonna close.
It's gonna close. They're just waiting for Sunstream to do it.
Yeah, until it happens.
Oh, we'll know next week.
My only last thing was, I like that term you used, Bible. But I want, we're gonna have a Bible when we're done with Russ and the ERCs and the rules, we're gonna have a Bible for the
All in L.
No, not just that, with all of it. I'm talking about when we redo all the rules and everything, we've got a Bible for the running of the whole place, right?
But yes, but there is no, that your utility ERCs, there's no change though.
No, no. No, what are you saying?
What you mean, total operation?
What, what, what?
Yeah, I knew that has all the everything.
What we've done, yeah, is revamped the rules. So this and that, we didn't have anything. We did have something.
Make sure it's inclusive.
Yeah. So do you want to be Mary Magdalene complain?
It's only a matter of time. Do we have, let me see, supervisor, any audience comments? Do I come up to the mic and identify yourself?
Catherine Hillmeyer, Newport Drive 314. The first thing is the internet sign on the exit of Newport Drive advertisement, little signs stuck in the yard. Yeah. There was a big issue about it many years ago. People stick in signs and if that can be removed, I would appreciate it.
Oh, you mean it's what I was just, somebody stuck it in the yard, sorry.
My whole thing is Newport Drive entrance. There's four or five, six different things that are on my list and Cal, I'll give you this list so you can take it with you. The first one is the main monument to have the roof cleaned off where the osprey had their nest. The water's still there. The two side monuments have been painted. The center one with the sunburst has not to have that painted. The stucco's cracking. It's got plants growing out of it. Needs to come up as far as having it painted. The lights, the only one that's working is the one on the entrance side, the west side of Newport. Both sides of the main monument are off, as is the one on the exit side, the east side. Only one out of four lights working. If, I'm assuming Excel will do the work, if the three new ones don't match the other one to replace all four at the same time. The east side monument is owned by the hotel. I would like if you could approach the hotel and get an agreement similar to what you did with Tonka for the monuments over on Case Drive. So we can have two things that the CID will take care of and they will be the same so we don't have what possibly may happen on Case where this one's gonna be this way and God only knows what's gonna happen that way. Both of the monuments on Newport east and west side, Soto quite a few years ago did some plantings just in the front portion, the main portion. Looking really ragged, especially since the fiber was put on in. The one plant on the entrance side into Newport dead, is still there. You still have Indian heart on that's dying, a lot of brush. Whole thing needs to be greatly cleaned up eventually and probably sooner than later with all the landscaping done going down Union Road and all the updating up there on Case Drive. The two monuments on Newport need to be completely redone and that's the front part and then the little wings that go to the back. Entrance side of Newport, there's still that box, looks like an irrigation box that has just wires in it with wire twists on it. That probably should be looked at by the electrical contractor.
It's not we rebuilt that, that was the leftovers. We didn't ever remove the leftovers, probably. I don't know.
It's been there since I was on the board and it's still there. Green box and it's hidden in the bushes and hide it and nobody thinks about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Jared Winters, 170 Newport Drive. Been resident here for about 22 years. What I hear is you're working at containing what we have. But I don't hear you looking at what are how the impact of changes we have built control over and what we may need to do. Just look up the road. It's gonna be thousands more toilets flooding. It's gonna be a lot more groundwater used. We don't know what the hydrology is from our source of water. I'm very familiar with the land out there. I'm very involved with the fact. Those wells could go dry. There is information available. If you were to contact, say, Mike Owen, who's been following the hydrology of the fact, I actually and get some sense of how is our water supplied? We would be here 15 years from now. It may not be here 10 years from now with what's going on up the road. That it could be thousands more people living there and using water. If they're also tapping into same aquifers, it's gonna affect us and we have to look and find that. We don't know.
I would love to have Mike Owen come and talk to us. I would love, I thought, I thought he retired. I lost track of him after he got married. But, but he would be the guy. He definitely would.
He is retiring in August.
Oh, so he's still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, he would be the guy for sure.
Yeah, he can tell you the history of what has happened with, every month he goes out as hydrology studies. Yeah, wells. I did that with him one day. It was awful. But it's not only that. It's where are all those people up the road gonna be getting their water? This place was started, nobody thought that. It's right in the middle of nowhere. And now that's not true. How much water does this public's provide? It's nice to have public closure, but it does have an impact on our sources. And I'd like to see some attention.
Devil's advocate. Do we have any choice? In other words, we're not responsible. We didn't permit all the other homes, et cetera. And there's only certain places we can drill for water and depending upon what it is, if we lose our aquifer, then you have to, you'll have to find another place for water, whether it be another aquifer, deeper, whatever.
Peasalination.
Right. I mean.
But that's what the water management district's supposed to do. They detect and they manage and regulate how much water you can draw from the aquifers.
And also the county well field, I think, way up going to the states. If I'm not mistaken. But again, that's, that's right. Water management district issues the water withdrawal and water use permits. It's not the use permit.
Yeah, and if you, as you get time to read Ron's historical information, there is some information about how we're in a state critical concern area as far as water withdrawals and so forth like that. We're pretty much isolated out here in the middle of everything. And with the, with, it seems, and talking with Mitch too, it seems like with the improvements they've been making upstream here, it's bringing a lot more water downstream to us. And in the past, we've seen a lot more drying out by the well field, but the water levels are staying up more and more. So we're getting some recharge from that. Again, is it something to be concerned about? Yeah, in the long term, yes. But again, we got the water management district that's supposed to be looking over the shoulders and making sure that, that.
Yeah, well, plus you got that Everglades restoration. That's.
And not to say you have the county, it's the conference of, I could call it CWA or something like that. Water, the watershed restoration program. That's, that's a multi-year permitting process from South Florida. The whole rehydration of the the area south of East of 951 south of here. That will see a Palmer over hydration. So I mean, you have all that going on. But, and again, the water use, the water use permit south forward really, really, really analyzes those and we've had a number of.
That's part of the reason too why, you know, we've got the combined fire irrigation system out here too, because we really we're trying to minimize the impacts to the water system, to the water aquifers and so forth by, I mean, 100% reuse.
I guess my point was, I'm not blaming.
No, no, no.
I'm not saying we should control what's going on up the road. I would love to say no to it, but that's a different issue. But I think we need to be forward looking. We need to get that information. So as we're making plans going forward, as we're looking at, will the plant live long enough for us? When we're talking to the county, will that make sense going forward because of X, Y, or Z? We don't know. And we need that information.
It never hurts to add too much information.
Exactly. And that's what I'm encouraging because I have not been here.
Yeah. If you see Mike Owen, that would be interesting.
I hope to see him Saturday.
Yeah, it would be interesting to hear what he's got to say.
It's always office hour, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I've known my wife about, yeah, my wife interned with him about 20 years.
Mike got married in the swamp.
Thank you.
Good guy.
Any other comments? Yes?
Jennifer Chance, I'm sorry, I've been irritated. Resident. My question is something that I asked at one of the previous meetings. And it's, will residents be able to participate in the meeting that you're planning with?
I think it was decided the first meeting would just be with the CID. And then? And then what?
For the handsome.
Here's what I recommend. I would recommend again, we're talking staff to staff, the original commission. That's not unusual. And then if that becomes more fruitful down the road, then there'll be staff in boards and then you'll have more public workshop participation. So this is a preliminary, we had preliminary discussion into Commissioner McCastro saying, we're the staff of the district. And we can ask to go talk with you about getting your staff to initiate conversation as to whether or not the county's interested in operating the technical requiring. The utility system for the, no decisions have been made, but what are your thoughts? I mean, that happens all the time for staff level and the public input is not available by quite time because it may go nowhere.
Right.
What, what the, the way it works there, I talked to him the other day. There's a woman from Callier County that is the point person. And they don't know really anything about this. And it's probably highly doubtful that they want to inherit this. But we need to ask and see if they would entertain the idea because of the cost of the operation. If they would, at that point, we would see how feasible that is. And if that happens, then it would go public for public input.
Yeah, very, again, under the statute for the sale of the utility system to governmental body acquisition, the check step very clear, it's a very comprehensive work to ask to be provided.
Yeah.
And the record and the findings that have to be provided. It's a multi, as I mentioned, when Gateway did it, it was a seven-year game. It took them tons of public hearings held in churches, held in large facilities, galloping full opportunity and one fell through and that sad dormant for a couple of years resurrected ultimately occurred. So again, this is typically the staff, appointing TV's the staff to the other. And the public is not part of that. Initial meeting is the staff to decide, here's what we want. And if the, if it goes any further, the public is well informed. The board's you want.
I carry it one step further for you and you already know this. The federal government and the law firm he's with, they're actually managing it to some extent right now and have been. And they've cut a lot of the EPA fines down for Everglades City. They've, they've been, that firm has been extremely instrumental. They want the county to take over the Everglades City facility because it makes more sense. Problem is, I'm telling you this for a reason. The problem is five years ago, the feds said because of the sensitivity of where it is, this far from the Everglades water, it's 55 million bucks. There's nobody to pay it and there's no money. And it's still the same now. They've been able to get rid of a lot of the fines and everything and the mayor. But, but it's, it's a real mess. I'm telling you that. Because part of my thought was they have heavy staffing, heavy buying power, heavy equipment. And their same staffing could run that plant and this plant. They're 30 minutes apart. What we don't want is we don't want any of that plant needing this plant. Because that would be very counterproductive. The county never did want to do that. It was the city. It was Mayor Sammy Hamilton that was trying to cut a deal with Tony Davis, who was on this board. But it didn't happen. But it's a real fear. We don't, the two would have to operate separate. But would it make more sense for Callier County to come out and take over both of? Maybe. We don't know that.
Well, and what about, actually, since the development is coming out this way, why can't we be hooking up with some other plants that's supposed to be the town instead of our one?
Our counties.
Just so you know, development can come any closer than the Six L's tomato farm. That's it. The land east of Six L's is internationally protected land that can never be developed under any circumstance.
No, it's a little further than Six L's.
Is it? Well, I'm going by what South Florida told me. But they've put in, South Florida's in the process of putting a 1.6 million dollar lift around Six L's right now. And that's as far as it can come. So would it be cheaper to do that? Probably not.
So what you're saying is that there, we need to keep our water plant because there's no options of having sewer and water coming.
Come west to east. It's, I mean, you can do anything, but it'd be phenomenal money that you probably wouldn't do. Honestly, in my opinion, what's the only thing they do? Here's the keys, run it. We're not gonna sell it to them. They're not gonna buy it.
Okay, because I think the residents want to know, are we gonna keep putting more and more money into here into our water plant? Or should we be taking the money and starting to work it, counting?
Well, that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
That's why we're doing it, yeah.
I guess, you know, you're, isn't one of it be better for the residents to hear the obstacles first hand? Than you having a private meeting with Astro or the utility people?
I resent this characterization problem. It's a meeting with a public entity. The typical process is the staff meets with the staff and the commissioner. That way we just have the initial conversations. What are your initial thoughts? What are your initial thoughts? And then we say, okay, you find this out, you find that out, and we come back. And ultimately we end up reporting back to the board. There's nothing secretive. There's nothing nefarious about that in the public. Generally does not meet the staff and staff being such as that. It's unheard of. I don't mean to sound exclusionary, but I've represented 45 years. And I've been on both sides, representing members of the public, representing governmental bodies and the staff, the staff. To start the dialogue. And then we come back, report to our party and say, here's where we are. What do you want us to do? And then the public hears all that. We do memorandums or meetings. Here's what happened at the meeting. And that's, this is a first step on the long road if it ever skips. Okay, right, right. I mean, we're talking multi-year process.
Let me try and explain something to you that, that I think you're getting at. You think if the county takes over the water treatment plant, that those spread the charges throughout the county? And I have a rental. I have property on, it's in Naples Farm, which is private roads. They looked into selling the road, okay, to the county so they would become part of the county so that the county build the road. Well, guess what they do? They come in and they put a special assessment on every single house to bring that, to bring that road up to
to bring that, to bring that road up to county standards. The whole county doesn't pay for it, just the people on that road pay for it. And the same thing would happen here. They would come and take over the plant, maybe, but we would still be a special assessment. The whole county wouldn't pay for this. It's not, it doesn't work that way. We would be, we would be special assessment, and we'd be paying the same or more, and you'd be paying more for water. I can almost get it.
The same with the fire district. The fire district is the same. Our rate, our mileage rate did not go down when the county came in. It's still there.
But we're not being paying special assessments to keep on maintaining our water plants?
Right.
Right. No, we don't own it.
So should we be paying more toward our water plants? Or should we be working toward hooking up the town?
Well, that's what we're looking into.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to find out. The county may say to us right at the beginning, we're not interested. In that case, this is our water plant, and we're gonna be responsible, which means everybody in the port will be responsible to help pay whatever it costs to keep it up. And that includes the CIP, you know, the millions of dollars that are gonna come. And if that CIP is just for what's coming, things happen in the meantime. Anything that's equipment breaks down, has to be repaired, has to be replaced. So we have to start somewhere, this is the, the first part. The, the, the public is going to be always know what we're doing, because when they come here and tell us, well, today we had a meeting with, you know, and this is what's been said, you're gonna be here. Yeah, but I wanna, I wanna reiterate to you a couple of things. First of all, that isn't exactly right. The, the big elephant in the room is the CIP. They can take over the plant, is it up to speed? Yeah, it's state of the art. The waste treatment plant, maybe not. But is the plant up to speed now? Yeah, it is, it's state of the art. Okay? So the county wouldn't have a problem with that. They're not gonna charge us for a pipe that might break five years from now. Is it spread out over the county? It is. It's not gonna be just us. The difference is, our CIP and what we're paying for infrastructure is the big expense. And that's the part that's killing us dead. Okay? I have, and another, with Rick LaCastro, I told you, and I would highly recommend you do this. It's not gonna be a meeting with him and Collier County at all, because they're a separate entity. It's not. He might open the door, which he has. I would strongly urge you, and I mean this not as a challenge, all of you concerned citizens should invite him out here, not in this setting, at the restaurant, or rent this room or place. He'll happy to come, he's happy to come. And get a lot of people, and, and show him that you're concerned. Okay? Because he is our representative. But he's not gonna be in any kind of formal discussions. It would be us and Collier County to see if they'd be interested. LaCastro doesn't want to be part of that, but he is our commissioner. So if, if he walked into a room full of people, and they're all saying, we really want this, and you're the guy we elected, he's gonna hear that, and there's where your impact's gonna be.
Okay, I guess I was concerned that he's gonna be thinking, well, I'm going out and talking with the CID, and then I'm going to another meeting and talking about the rest of it.
No, not at all.
About the same thing.
Not at all, not at all. In fact, you wanna know what? He really shouldn't have come and talked to the CID at all. He, he really is happy to do workshops. If you get on his website, you'll see every month he has workshops at the airport in Marco, all over the place, because that's public outreach. So he's not like that. And he would be more than hap, I mean, he's not gonna be happy if he comes down to three people. But I mean, if you can show some interest, he certainly would come up. Yeah.
Anything else?
On that point, just to make sure I'm clear. Is the boards still giving the authorization and directions to staff, except for me and Commissioner LaCastro, and relevant county staff?
You don't have to meet with LaCastro, he's not the right person.
I think he is.
You're actually know each other in this community?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, we want.
He will bring Amy Patterson in, he'll bring George Mazzin, Dr. George. He'll bring, and I don't know what other, you know, gentleman that was here before. And he'll bring all those folks in to talk about it. And maybe somebody from the county attorney's office, I'm jumping to the patio, those utilities. He may have them there, because he wants all the staff there to hear. And all we're gonna say is, here, we've had some initial discussions, what are your thoughts? And they may say, you know what? Like you said, they may agree or look at it. Hey, good seeing you again, Tony.
Yeah.
And I'll say, George, good to see you, Dr. George, good to see you, Commissioner LaCastro, who I saw this past Wednesday. I can talk to him recently, and he is very affable. He is very much interested in this community. So that's what, I just wanna make sure we show that direction.
That's where we're gonna.
It's just a chat.
Absolutely.
And, and again, he, as you mentioned, Mr. Jensen, he's always happy to come into the, he lives in himself, as two things. I'm a commissioner for all the county, and I love the folks in my district. That's two parts.
He'll be, listen, just like you or anyone else or me, he'll be happy to come out and talk to a group of concerned citizens, especially at Port of the Island. I wanna tell you something, before he got elected, he was the only candidate that came out here, and I wasn't on the border, and Michelle Holloway and I met him here, and we took him around. And we showed him the gun range, we showed him the old hotel. He get out of the car, and he walked around on the old hotel. I thought he was gonna get killed, and he took pictures with his phone. He went out to the gun range, and he knew people out there that were shooting. And he fell in love with the place. And you know what the scary thing is? I never knew this was here.
Scary thing, it's up home.
Yeah, well, go eat. We're in the middle of Marco Island.
He does his own newsletter by himself.
Yeah.
We had my, I had my meeting with him on Wednesday, he said, help us, he means Tony, I need to finish my newsletter.
Yeah.
He typed it, so you can get it, so you should send him an email or try.
Absolutely.
Say, please put me on your newsletter list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one quick question.
I have one.
Okay. My question is, lately, we've been noticing a, a lot more ATVs and golf carts, et cetera, riding around in. On the streets? Yes, the streets. My question is, in this, in the CID or in the port, do they require a tag on them to do that legally? Or can they ride them around without being tagged?
They're not road approved, like Collier County.
Uh, which, are they the roads, county roads? Yeah. They're public roads, but not county.
They're not, they're not county maintained.
Right.
CID maintained.
Right.
But, well, they're not, they're public rideaways.
Golf carts, you have low-speed vehicles, they're different. They, they are registered, they're titled just like motor vehicles.
Yeah.
They have tags, and they can run around.
Right.
A golf cart's not supposed to, I mean, and ATVs. And then I would just contact the sheriff department, see if that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, yeah, as I said, just make sure that they're covered, but there are, we're getting more of them here. We got a few of them. And there are immunities that, you know, you know, right? I think there's a Billy to, to. By, by, by state artists that you can.
They can go there.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to stress or to mention is, and Ray hates to disagree with you, but Tony Davis and whatever that.
They didn't have an agreement.
They had, they, Tony was never.
Thank you.
What happened with that is that, and Tony totally was not. And I just, he's still a resident, and I wanna make sure that, that, that's known. But what happened was, Holmontez was involved with the plant at Everglades City.
Many years.
And many years ago. And because Ron was part of it, the discussions occurred where EPA asked Ron that if they needed to get rid of the, the reject water, could it be brought to Port of the Islands? They were exploring. Then Ron brought that question to the board, which he should have, and they discussed it. And Ray, you and your group were able to stop that.
But let me disagree with you. Tony Davis sat right there, he said Sammy Hamilton is a personal friend of mine. He'll find the money, because everybody said, how are you gonna pay for these trailer trucks full of wastewater to get, get handled every month? We can't afford that. And he sat right there pushing it, and said, Sammy Hamilton can get the money. He's a very good personal friend of mine, which he was, okay? Ron sat right there, and he said, I got the contract sewed up for the new plant, and they'll do whatever I want. Sat right there and said it. And at the city meeting, that Sammy Hamilton got the ax, I was sitting there with one of his partners. And I took him aside, and I said, tell me one thing. Did, did you guys ever, did Sammy Hamilton ever tell Holmontez they had the deal? And I forget his last name, said, it'll be over my dead goddamn body. He said it was a handshakeer with Sammy, and Sammy's gone.
I don't think Ron ever said he had an agreement.
He said it in a public meeting, he absolutely said it. He said he had the deal for the new plant. He said it in a public meeting, a board meeting.
I, I don't remember, I can't imagine that. I think, I think, there was, we did do some work for Everglades City.
Yeah.
And it was somewhat between Sammy and the firm.
Yeah.
And anyway, at that point, I, I don't know all the legalities and all that kind of stuff. But it was found that the agreement was not something that could be held up.
Right. It was a handshakeer.
Yeah.
But he really did, how else would I know?
We, I think, I think the firm thought we were gonna be doing the work, but then whatever happened, happened.
Right. So that's how that was.
I have one to add to this, which I find amazing. I had somebody ask me about coming to dump Everglades City sewage into our plant. And while I had these people there, I called Mitch, and I said, Mitch, is this going on? And he says, absolutely not. It was the sludge company coming to take it out, not bringing it in, so.
Well, no, but they were, they were gonna bring it in, it was in the paper.
But it never happened.
No.
It never happened.
There was all kinds of options to try, because part of the EPA process is to throw your options and so forth. There was talk about even pumping Everglades City sewage all the way to Naples.
Yeah.
What they were gonna do was truck it here every night, and instead.
It was an option.
My understanding is, they're still trucking it somewhere else. No, it's not, who cares, they were pushing it. They were pushing it.
It was a tough conversation.
It was in board meetings.
As far as drainage and everything else.
It was in board meetings.
It was a tough conversation. Why are we going?
But it never, it was never a proposal.
No, I never said there was.
But it, it was just a question that Ron brought back, because the EPA official asked if this was an option. Ron brought it, and the, basically, the, the board didn't have anything to act on.
Right.
Other than this, you know, this question.
But it came up at three different meetings.
But there's no motion, so it happened.
Yeah, nothing happened, nothing was.
I have one final thing. Can we get an eight plate?
Sure.
I like it.
Well, uh.
You mean, you don't wanna know who they are?
They're, they're in it, yes. Yeah, well, it's, it's.
It's your job, but you're.
Maybe you should put that on president.
Yeah. It doesn't, look, she thought it said that already.
Well, what's nice about that is you can get one that says, president, or chair, Karen, and then you can just change it out.
Oh, look, I must put someone else's name.
Charles Manson, oh, Manson, there you go. That's more appropriate. I like that.
All right, so can I?
We're gonna, just name or position two on the.
Now, this is.
Just name, positions change, just name.
Yeah, squeaky.
Yeah.
I'll make them much squeaky.
I'm gonna give you a Jared.
I second that. Alan Baker?
Hi.
Thank you for coming.